All right, I've got six thirty and the assessments are on the agenda for later. So this is the Newport Board of Select Huns meeting for August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Everyone please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right, General Burke?
I have nothing.
All right, Keith?
Uh, I'm all set. I don't have anything.
Barry?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, um, good. Uh, Hunter, anything? All right, minutes from August first. Motion on the minutes from August first.
Go ahead.
We will to accept the minutes from August first as presented.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion changes? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? All right, I forgot something I do want to do to change to the agenda. I'll remove informational C up ahead of A. Is that all right?
That's good.
All right, all right, your consent agenda, the back of your consent, of your agenda, tonight's consent agenda, it's a big one. Do I have a motion on that?
Will to accept.
Second.
Any discussion changes, hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? All right, moving on, this is open forum. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda to do so. Public will have a chance to speak on agenda items when we get to it. And to start with open forum, I'm gonna go first. And I'm gonna speak on the SRO, uh, discussion that's been going around. A little background, sometime in spring of two thousand and twenty-two, maybe late winter, uh, Newport Police Department was down about three officers. And because of that, the decision was made to pull the SRO out of the schools and the officer that was serving the drug task force back so that we could cover patrols. Uh, that's a decision that's made by the police chief and the town manager. About the same time, we were negotiating a contract with the police department. And we had a large number of them come in here because we were, uh, negotiations were going a bit slowly at the time. And they talked about the fact that we were down three and we were losing people and, you know, the entire town was falling apart and, uh, everyone's property and lives were gonna be in jeopardy. So shortly after that, we reached an agreement with the police department. We, uh, you know, reached an agreement and went to town meeting and it passed. So since then, we are still down three officers and, uh, no worry about doing it. But the current, our current status is we have one officer that is deploying, uh, with the National Guard for about a year. We have one officer that's in field training and, uh, one officer that is going to the academy here with the next class. The officer that's deployed has gone for a good year or so. One, in field training, may be available, maybe in December, maybe early January. And the one that's just entering, uh, the next academy class won't be available until probably a couple months into two thousand and twenty-three. Now, the, uh, one position, because we're down three, that's not being, has not been being staffed, it's a school resource officer. And the, uh, prior chief, Chief Womack, literally on his way out the door, because we've been discussing this, town manager hasn't been looking for ways to address it. You know, Chief Womack made, uh, I'd say a promise to the new superintendent that there won't be an SRO without leaning behind any way of staffing that position and maintaining coverage on the streets of Newport. Uh, there's a lot of concern about SROs now, given what happened in Texas a couple months ago with the shooting down there at elementary school. I will say that since that time, the town manager and Chief Womack and his replacement interim chief, Hunter, have been reviewing the readiness of the Newport Police Department. And the town manager has informed the chief that, uh, if you need equipment, obtain the equipment, if you need training, we'll arrange it. This is something that doesn't change overnight, but Newport, you know, under the, by the direction of the town manager to the police chiefs, are looking at how we respond to incidents like that, how prepared we are and what can we do to be better prepared to serve, you know, and protect our community. Now, there's been some back and forth between the superintendent and the town manager and such. On, uh, last Thursday, the town manager sent a, uh, a response or a letter to the superintendent listing five points. And at the school board meeting last Thursday night, uh, superintendent discussed those with the school board. And, uh, you know, I guess the sticking point was the fact that in order to, right now, being down, to cover, to provide a school resource officer in the school, which would be a decision made by the police chief based upon staffing, to put one in there, it may be necessary to bring another officer back on patrol on overtime. This is a cost of about time and a half to us. And that was a cost the town manager recommended passing on to the school district to provide that school resource officer, you know, and still keep an officer on the street. In the letter the town manager sent to the superintendent on Thursday, and the school board was handed this letter, I guess Thursday night, as I recall, and I received it from the town manager this afternoon, passed it on to the select board about an hour, two hours ago, so you may not have seen it. On his closing, basically at the end, it says, "In closing, we will be pleased to commit the time necessary to finalize these thoughts and your proposed changes into a final agreement in such a manner so as to provide an SRO to the SAU in time for the beginning of the new academic year. Please feel free to contact me directly should you have any questions." Now, on, at the Thursday night school board meeting, I guess the school board decided, well, they would come to this meeting and negotiate with the select board directly. My feeling, my position is, we don't negotiate employment issues here, that's why we have a town manager, that's why the school board has a superintendent. And certainly, you know, the only member here who, of the board who has some experience in doing this is not here, he's not, not on, on the call yet. So we are not qualified to determine, you know, police officer rosters and patrol duties and such and determine, you know, who patrols the street and who patrols in the school. That's a decision made by the, uh, town manager and the, uh, police chief. And certainly, it is the position of the town that we want to support and provide an SRO in the school as much as we can. Now, I mentioned earlier that we have one officer being deployed that will be gone for about a year. And when they finish their deployment, we are obligated to bring that officer back. So what the, uh, town manager and the, uh, police chief to, to do is to hire what's called a provisional officer, which is basically, would be a full-time certified officer who would join us, but when the other officer comes back from deployment, that provisional officer would leave and the one that returns gets their position back. You know, sometimes the provisional officer, because of changes in, uh, staffing and such, would just may leave or they just may move over to another position within the department, depending upon, uh, needs and staffing at the time. The, uh, notice to hire a provisional officer went out today. You know, there's a couple of people that, uh, have been interested in it and were looking at some officers, an officer that's already certified so they'd be able to quickly adjust Newport and move into that position. Now, at the school board meeting, I mean, there was, uh, apparently some comments concerning our town manager and the fact that he's doing all this. He basically works with this board. He's keeping us informed of what's going on and such. He's not acting on his own and such. He's, uh, whatever you may think or want to think, you know, or present to the public, our town manager has done some excellent things for the town. Uh, for example, we are on the cusp of getting a new community center with no cost, no tax cost to the taxpayers. Another thing, people may have noticed that electricity rates are going up, you know, everyone's looking at a hundred percent increase in their electric bills. Here in Newport, we're looking at a two percent increase. Because several years ago, the town manager switched us over to solar and we have a twenty-five year agreement. So we basically can predict, we can tell you what our electricity rate will be ten years from now. And it's certainly gonna be a lot less than what it would be if he hadn't had forethought to, uh, claim for the future of this community. So blaming the overall situation with staffing, you know, which is not just a Newport issue, it's an issue throughout the community, uh, you know, does a disparity to him, it does it to this board, and it doesn't do anything to, uh, address this issue. My feeling, this is an issue that the superintendent and the town manager, along with the police chief should walk, work out. Now, I have some issues with the superintendent. At the, uh, school board meeting, the, uh, your superintendent, basically out of the blue, stated three times, she would never charge us for using a room for voting. I can play it if you want, I have it on my, uh, computer. She would never consider doing that. Three times in about thirty seconds, she used the word never consider. But somehow, by Friday about noon time, when the town manager called the superintendent to follow up on the SRO issue, you know, she was busy, she had to go into her meeting and was gonna call him back. But she had time to comment that, you know, maybe I'll have to charge you for, you know, using the gym. You know, maybe, you know, we shouldn't let you be using it. She also raised the issue that the rec department was using a school bus. And it was like new information and we're not paying for it. I think I remember when I was on the school board, thirty-some years ago, the rec department would come to the school board at each spring and ask for permission to use a bus. And the provision was laid out, how they, how it's used, how it's paid for, you know, so that's not an issue. But I have to take exception to the superintendent, on one hand, out of blue telling you Thursday night, oh, we'll never charge him to use a room for voting, and then Friday, telling the town manager, we're gonna have to charge you for a room if we let you use one at all. And so, and I only know that because I was in the room during that phone call and heard it, so. But this is an issue, unless this board decides they want to figure out rosters and staffing for the police department, this is an issue where the superintendent, the town manager, and the police chief need to sit down like adults and work it out.
But you are not speaking, you're speaking for yourself.
I am.
Yeah, 'cause I'm a little bit dismayed in the fact that you've obviously had a lot, a lot of time to prepare for this. I haven't.
Okay.
We just received this, what'd you say, forty-five minutes ago?
Forty-five minutes before the meeting started.
So while I do know the issues that are going on, I was never informed about a five-point proposal, never. In fact, I think you're probably the only one that was. So, you know, don't speak for me.
I'm not.
Because I, you know, I have some issues. I think, I don't know if you're here to negotiate tonight or you're here to just air your grievances. I'm, when I'm finished, you can talk.
All right, I just thought I was next, I raised my hand first, I'm sorry. You just took off going.
Yeah, 'cause I'm up top.
Me too.
It concerns me that we're having a discussion. I don't, I don't disagree with Jeff, they can work it out. But we're unaware of all of this. And you've got, you talked for ten minutes.
Just, just to clarify, I learned about the five-point statement when I listened to the school board meeting over the weekend. I just received it a couple hours ago and then passed it on.
You did all listen a couple hours ago?
In about the last hour, yes.
Yep. Well, that's my two cents to it. You know, I, I think as a board, we have a right to have a discussion about this, not, don't, don't try to silence me.
Sir Chairman?
Yes. Uh, so, let me, let me see anyone else on the board have a question right now or issue?
That was Jim.
That's Jim. John Hooper. All right, Jim, you're showing up as John Hooper.
Yeah, I know, unfortunately, my technology wasn't set up to work, so I'm having to use this, but just a couple of quick comments about, you know, where we're at today relative to the SRO. Over the last few weeks, I spoke with both the outgoing chief and the incoming chief, who told me they had staffing appropriate to cover their position, uh, without having to backfill or, or do anything different relative to, you know, hiring anybody different. So I don't know why we're talking about having to hire somebody new, but both the outgoing and current acting chiefs said they have staffing. New Hampshire RSC one oh five two A talks about staffing and it's the police chief's prerogative where and how he uses his people. The board can't dictate that, the manager can't dictate that. So if he wants to put an SRO in a school, he can do so without having any other input from the manager, the board, or anybody else. So there's been a longstanding agreement for the better part of twenty years that's been through Dan O'Neil, St. O'Keefe, Hunter, Paul, uh, and as many school board, um, and superintendents. So I don't know why we're having to rewrite and change, but it's been working very, very successfully and we have the staff to do it currently. So I'm kind of at a loss as to why we're at, where we're at.
Hunter? Yeah, I can, I can address that. Jim, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
The, the agreement that was presented to us last Thursday was an agreement that we've never seen before, or I've never seen before. Uh, Chief Hunter, um, had never seen it before. It was not a copy of the original, it was not a copy of the original. I was informed that it was a copy that was being promulgated around the state, um, to, to make the agreements more uniform from town to town. Um, and, uh, we have not had an opportunity to review that, uh, with our attorney because the school uses an attorney that they have already contacted and reviewed the document, um, by or with, and that attorney is a member of the same firm that our attorney is a member. And I made a request that the school superintendent, uh, contact their attorney and waive their concerns about conflicts so that we could review it with our attorney. To my knowledge, that has not occurred yet. So we've not had an opportunity to review the new proposed document.
So they sent you a document?
No, it was given, a document.
You were given?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that's first I hear that.
Well, I mean, this is a, we do negotiation of contracts all day, every day.
Well, if it gets to the final end of it, you know, I mean, I know you keep Jeff informed, but I, you know, I'm a little bit upset that we weren't informed.
We put, no, no, no.
Oh, yes.
I put what my activities on board notes that you receive every day.
And I appreciate that, but there was nothing about the five-point plan and nothing, no.
No, you know I'm negotiating with the school over the matter, but why would I send you a, a copy today when it's gonna change in an hour and change tomorrow and so on? We usually negotiate.
I just don't like being caught on the wing.
And when, well, if we have, if we were aware the school board was gonna attend tonight's meeting, I would have distributed this information to you, but we did not receive a phone call from the school board requesting to be on the agenda tonight. So they're, they're here without.
Well, they didn't.
I didn't.
I took it off.
Well, but you, we didn't receive, I didn't receive a call from anybody at the school board, so, so otherwise you would have been prepared. If it was gonna be an item on the agenda, we're giving you the background and the, and the material to date. But it changes all the time. We're negotiating, uh, an agreement with the Opera House, we're negotiating agreement, um, you know, at the, at the wastewater treatment plant, we're negotiating agreements on the River Bend Pump Station, and on and on and on. And yes, you are given the benefit of final drafts or documents that we are, uh, we are selling on. You know, we gave you guys a big pile of agreements, we're for huge dollars on the wastewater treatment plant. So, um, I think that you're, you're responding to circumstances that, you know, were beyond our control. I'm still waiting for the superintendent to respond to the five points. She was given, uh, a meeting, a face-to-face meeting, um, when Chief Hunter was there. These are my contemporaneous notes that I wrote, these are the items that were addressed to her during the meeting. I followed up with his email four, three or four days later saying, these are what our interests are, please let me know where we are on this. And that's the back and forth that occurs normally in, in contract negotiations. And the next time.
Well, I respect, submit to the, to the superintendent that we've had an SRO since nineteen ninety-eight and a very positive working relationship with the school with an SRO in there.
Correct.
And a contract has been very well received on both sides for the better part of twenty years.
And that's correct.
I don't know why we're trying to rewrite or redo something that's been so successful for so long.
So, um, we haven't, we haven't had the opportunity to address the contract in and itself. And I can assure you, uh, that Chief Hunter will tell you that we do not have adequate staffing, we spoke about it today, and we're having to backfill our current levels of staffing at time and a half, just to maintain the staffing we have, which will be made worse if we send out an SRO. So we have to have some relief, we have to have some ability to draw staff in, cover those positions.
Right.
But we could send one if they were willing to pay.
Yes, because I'll be able to afford to hire more staff to backfill that position. We're already backfilling several positions, uh, as it is, and so at some point, it's gonna break the bank, and I won't be able to do it. So it's a matter of my maintaining the balance. And we've outlined for them, if this, we believe this is a temporary situation, situation. I've, I've had a very cordial conversation with the previous superintendent about this and he understood the, the details, the logistics. We projected that at that time when we had to call the SRO back, that it was probably gonna be late fall, early, early winter before we'd be able to rectify the situation. We're pretty much on target. Uh, it's something that we intend to do, it's the email that Mr. Kessler referred to, starts and ends with a statement of our commitment to providing an SRO as quickly as we can. We've lost four days of conversation, uh, on this, including the weekend. Um, and we're just, we're waiting to continue our discussion. Happy to do it.
And can you just state your name for the record?
Yes, Donna McGoon, I'm the interim superintendent of the Newport School District. Um, first of all, gentlemen, I'd like to thank you for having allowed me to speak this evening. One thing that I've always learned growing up is that your word and what you say is the most important thing you can ever display. And I want to assure you that I never had that conversation and said that I would charge. What I did say was that we don't charge, is what I said. We don't charge, and we don't. And I did say we would never charge and we wouldn't for voting. And so I don't know what you've heard, but you must have misunderstood what I was saying. Um, secondly, I did, I was on my way into a meeting and I did, um, he did ask if I could call back to set it up. I did call it back. I actually spoke with your wife because you left your cellphone at home, so I did return your phone call. So, um, I'd just like to clarify that. Um, I spoke with both chiefs, I sat down with both chiefs. Both chiefs assured me that I would have an SRO come September, both chiefs. It was not until Hunter came in and said to me, and I have an email, if you'd like this email, that what they said contradicts what he said and that I am to reach out to him for anything his employees want to do. That's what he said to me.
Reach out, reach out to who?
Reach out to him. If, if I go, if one of his employees is to tell me something that contradicts anything he says, that I am to reach out to him. So Hunter and I had a conversation about an SRO, I gave him an idea, he said, let's think, you know, let's look at it, we'll work on it. Two weeks later, I have both of his chiefs in my office, both telling me that I'm gonna have an SRO. I did not know that I was supposed to check back in with Hunter. I was under the authority that they were there to, to meet with me, to talk about this. They both assured me that I would have an SRO, they told me who it was, they told me background on him, they told me he's been in the school for years. I can tell you stories that they had told me. Uh, so I just wanted to let you know, both, I did meet with both chiefs on that. Um, as far as the contract, the contract actually came from Brett, it did not come from me. It was a contract that was offered to the school district from the police department, not from the police department to the school district. I have no idea if you, if that was shown to your lawyers or not. It came from your police department to me. I showed it to my attorney, my attorney worked out some things, and I sent it back. So it came, it did not come from my office, it came from your office. Um, I did have a conversation with my attorney, and my attorney had told me that his partner is the, also the attorney that works with the town attorney. He asked me if I would object to the two of them working it out, and I said absolutely not. So my attorney and I went through everything. I have an email, if you'd like me to bring to you, or I can pull up, from, that I sent to both Hunter and the chief saying, I have, we met last week, I have not heard a response yet, can you please send me the information so I can bring it to my board on Thursday, on, this evening? I can show you that email if you would like, because I still have the email, Hunter, that you sent me, and I sent you. So I do have that, um, I'm just trying to see, as, as, like I said, as far as payment goes, um, I never said that. What I did speak with Hunter about, and I have, um, that information if you would like me to show you, I said, Hunter, we don't, the school district does not charge the town for things that they do. I said, we don't charge you for voting, right? We take, we take that, we don't charge you, in the summertime, the, the SAU office down below is used for your rec center, we don't charge you for that. Basketball season, we don't charge you for that. And I said, we don't charge you in the summertime, I have, I can show you, we spent approximately forty-two or forty-five hundred dollars this summer alone, just this summer, transporting rec center children. It was our bus, our diesel fuel, our driver. We did not get repayment back, that's this year, and it also happened last year. If there was an agreement prior to that, I don't know, I cannot find anything in the works that says that the school district will eat that cost or will rebuild. But what I do know is I've been told by my VA for the last two years, we have not built the town for it.
Okay, that should be built back to the town. I mean, that is a rec department use and expense and should be built to the proper department.
I've, and this information, and I said to Hunter the same thing, I said, this information that I'm finding out about the rec center, because what had happened, right, is after Thursday's meeting, people come in, people call, and someone came to me and said, did you know that we don't charge the town for the uses of our buses during the summer? And I said, no, I did not know. And I looked into it with my VA and that is how we found out, it's been going on for two years that we don't do that. Now, the town used to do a lot with the schools, they used to mow our fields, we used to work really, from my understanding, we used to work really well together. I wanna get back to that. I don't wanna be this, you pay this, we pay this. We're, we're all here for the kids, we're all here for the community. The goal is to bring up the, our school, so that way it helps bring up the community and we have more people wanting to move into our community. That, that's what my goal, my number one, one of my number one goals is the safety of our kids. We never said that we would not pay. One hundred percent, we will pay, but we should not have to pay time and a half. That's all that we're saying, we should not have to pay time and a half. It's almost, and I, and it's almost like our hands are being tied, right? Because the safety is one of our number one priorities, the safety of our students and our staff is our number one priority. If we don't pay time and a half, then we're saying that we don't think it's worth our kids being safe. And so our hands are being tied, and if something does happen in our schools, we don't want it to be, well, the school didn't pay time and a half, or this, you know, we offered this to our school, but we weren't willing to pay it, they weren't willing to pay it. That's not what it should be, it should be, we're working together. We are working together as one unit, moving our Newport forward, not taking two steps forward, five steps backwards, one step forward, six steps backwards. We need to get together and move forward. And protecting our kids is our, it should be a number one priority.
Yep, and as I said, the rec department needs to be built for their use of the bus in summer, it used to be done all the time, and it's expected, we expect it so that we can keep a counting as to exactly what those programs are costing. So if we're charging those programs or doing scholarships, we know what we need to act for. And as far as voting, I'm happy to hear that we won't have to look for another place to vote, and certainly if there are costs involved, you know, direct costs like custodial costs, you know, for cleaning up after voting and all, that certainly should be passed on to the town, we have a budget for elections.
Mr. Chairman?
I can respond very briefly to that. I, I think, in my opinion, we're, we're, we're losing focus here.
Yeah.
There are a lot of extraneous issues, uh, that have no, that there are no relationship to the SRO position, um, as far as I'm concerned. Um, there, my recollection is, is the town has had a facilities use agreement in place in varying formats and contexts since, I believe it was nineteen eighty-three, um, and until the past year or so, that was working fine and so on and so forth, it was renegotiated periodically. And that was the previous superintendent about this last winter, maybe in the fall in preparation for the budget, and he acknowledged that a lot of things have changed, the school had built a lot of their own fields and was doing a lot of their own thing and we didn't really need it, and, and he said, well, it really doesn't, it's not really relevant anymore, so we left it, so that I, we kind of said, well, neither, neither one of us is gonna charge either or for the use of facilities.
to charge either or for the use of facilities. But if our use of those facilities, which in this context, I think would extend to school buses and fuel and any kind of labor that's associated with that, that we would bill each other for hard costs, for the actual costs that were, that we would encounter for the delivery of those services. And that's worked fine. He has sent me a bill in the past for janitorial, cleanup after elections, because but for our need to have an election, he wouldn't have that expense. So we agreed to reimburse for that and that, to my recollection, was working fine. Um, and so the school has changed the way they want to manage their fields and properties and that's their prerogative to do that. But I really think we need to set that aside for a separate day. If you want to talk about facilities and maintenance and things of that nature, I'm happy to do that. We've had decades of practice whereby there was that kind of give and take and that exchange and so on and so forth. We're focused on the SRO now. There are more than one interpretation of what has just been said here. I, I have some rebuttal, but I don't think it's worth wasting anybody's time and doesn't advance us to the, to the goal at hand. So we remain, as I put in my email, we remain, despite a very heavy workload, we remain committed to meeting and discussing this as necessary and getting it all lined up. I said it at the beginning of the email, said it at the end of the email. So there we are.
Barry?
So your five-point proposal isn't a final thought on your part?
No, it's a proposal. That's why it's a proposal.
Okay. So the one thing I would agree with Jeff on is that we shouldn't be negotiating publicly here. We just can't do that. Okay? Uh, so, but I'm glad to hear that it doesn't seem to be a fait accompli, that, you know, I may have some of my own opinions of one and a half percent, but I'll keep it to myself for now. Uh, and, uh, I think we should proceed with discussions and again, the thing I agree that Jeff said, uh, it's up, although I think the police chief needs to be involved in this because it is his responsibility.
Police chief is involved in everything.
He should be here tonight.
And he approved that email before I sent it back. And I have emails saying that's right, that's what we discussed.
Okay, good. As long as he's involved, because he's the main character.
He's involved. To put him on the, on the spot, as he, he's not our, he was not our police chief at the time. He was shadowing.
But I believe the RSA states very directly that it is his responsibility.
It's his responsibility to direct existing staff, but not to enter into a contractual agreement.
No, I don't disagree with that.
To the town. So there's, and he is, he is with me and he approved that email before I sent it. In fact, I, I got the email, his email saying, yes, that's the, that's the case. There's probably less than a minute before I forward it to the, to the SAU.
All right. Young man, your name clues?
First one to raise my hand and the last one to get called on. Everyone kept on butting in. But I'm saying that, I'm going to step back a little bit. My name's Kurt Minnet.
Thank you.
And the chair started the meeting off fairly well. And then he totally, with his last two minutes of speech, totally threw it into chaos. He was ready to fight. You just picked that up in the attic. Your whole demeanor was perfect at first, but then you had something you wanted to get off your chest that was controversial. And even your board, at least one of them, wasn't happy with the delivery you made. So in saying that, I gotta talk about the, the school has the largest population in one continuous place all day long. Other than Rugers, which has all their own security. So the school is becoming a sticking point of two personalities. So Newport issue, so freaking stupid. Get the RSO up there, continue your negotiations, make it work up. Don't make the community uneasy because you can't get an RSO up there to make the school. I don't care what you're going to do, just get them up there, get everything else off your chest, don't put your personality in a way, and take care of our children and our school. Stop making it political. Then as adults and as people that negotiate stuff, after a while you can get together and get all the chips off your shoulder and lay it out and talk like adults and handle it like adults that want to get somewhere. You guys are getting nowhere. There's a, there's another typical Newport mess. And I'm sorry to see it happen at the expense of our school, our children.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's SRO, not RSO.
I'm a little bothered. I get.
Anyone else? Yes, state your name for the, oh, let me go back behind you there to the school board chair. State your name, please.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jenna Darling. I am the school board chair. Thank you for letting me go. I have somebody with ants in their pants here and I left my other two boys at home with my dad. So I'd like to get home before my house falls down. I, I appreciate all the work that's already been done to try to get an SRO in the building. My concern is, is we come up to budget season for an already cash-strapped school district to pay time and a half and then seventy-five percent of benefits. I worry what we're going to have to lose. We are trying so desperately to keep teachers and paraprofessionals, um, good people in our schools and we're trying so hard to keep our kids safe. And my goodness, you've got our, myself, Mr. Spalding and Mr. Beard here all in agreement on something. This is really, this is really, this is really important to our board and it's not that, again, we're not willing to pay. We just, we just want you to know that we need to negotiate this because we feel like time and a half and seventy-five percent is a lot, too much for us. And I will stop there.
Let me just clarify. An SRO will not make the school safe. They will make it a safer environment, but there is, there are no absolutes here.
Not asking for absolutes.
Right, but it's, you know. You in the front row, you state your name, please?
Bert Spalding, senior. Jeff, I have admired you for many, many years as a chair in doing absolutely the correct thing to do. But tonight you started off by putting your hand on your six-gun and standing there waiting, waiting for things to happen while you spoke. Jeff, that was wrong. You should have let the idea during the forum be expressed and you yourself said, you had the request to be on the agenda and you said no to it. So therefore it came here under the forum, which you have respected for years and should have respected tonight without comment first. You were rebuttling before someone had the opportunity to speak. That being said, now let's go with the issue. It's real simple. We don't need to talk about anything else other than an SRO in our school at the beginning of this school year, come hella high water. It can't be, we, we can argue about the dollars after. It'd be a hell of a note to find out that the SRO didn't come because we hadn't agreed to an agreement yet. It is an obligation. As Mr. Burrows pointed out, it's well over twenty years it's been happening. And I had a list of questions here for Jim to, to state, uh, about the SRO and, uh, what it meant and how it happened. When did it happen? Why did it happen? How did it happen? So those are the things. What we got to do is get the personality out tonight. It's not him, it's not her, it's not me. The issue, the issue is protection within the schools. You were at a meeting on a Friday afternoon where I expressed to Hunter that there is no act that I know can possibly entertain in, that would happen in this town in criminality that would bring down the town aura more than a school shooting. Bert shoots his wife. Yeah, might make front page of the Eagle and who knows what in the Valley News.
You're more likely the other way.
One. You don't know her. She stuck to me like a bullet. So that being said, the issue here is, can we do that? So the question to, to you tonight would be, do you agree as a board to supply us with an SRO at, on the first day of school? And then we'll figure out all the nuances later. We need it. And I also made a list of some of the things that stood out, but all of them really are just relatives of the issue, not the issue. Get right to the issue. I want to ask a simple question and then I will speak again. Will this board make a motion to support an SRO in the Newport School District, first day of school this year? Would you make that motion? Would someone make that motion?
I'd make that motion. All right.
I'll second it. But I have a question. I don't want to stand in the way of negotiations. That's real important. I think we have people who can come to an understanding. The five points, as I asked Hunter, is not fait accompli. All right. You're, you're concerned, you're concerned. Get a goddamn SRO up there. I lived under an SRO up there for six years and, and I found it extremely beneficial. So I don't want to interfere with negotiations, but I do want to have an SRO up there the first day.
I don't want to disagree with you. You are right. The negotiations can come later. Let's make, what I'm asking here is the commitment by the board to have an SRO there, which means these two have got to sit down in negotiations and get, settle their differences, but we, we as a board, school board, know that it's going to happen somehow. And, and then if that, if that's the case, then this discussion is over tonight because it will be settled amicably and done, as it has been in the past. It is this letter that was the, uh, beginning of the difference from what was said by two police officers, two chiefs, to the superintendent, excuse me, interim superintendent, um, that made for the differences. And then not putting it on the agenda was kind of offensive, at least from my vantage point.
I will tell you, I don't think it should have been.
So now I'm wandering off the issue. The issue right now in front of us is a motion and it was made. And I would like to see that motion go through and then I would like to speak to what else would happen.
Yeah.
Um, I think Jim said that it's the chief's prerogative to assign duty to his officers as he sees fit. So if it's his decision to have an SRO present or not, then what's, you know, I, have, have we lived without one for the last year? Can I answer that for you?
Sure.
There's a nuance there. The, the statute is intended to give the chief flexibility to allocate his staff during the normal course of business, where to send them for patrol, how to do patrol, things of that nature. It, it does not contemplate the, the police department entering into a, a binding agreement for services on a long-term basis. That falls to the town. Only the town can do that. We do it in conjunction with him. There's a slight nuance there. You get the difference. But there has been an SRO agreement in, in place for, for years. Everywhere I've worked, there's been one. And as I said, I started out the beginning of this email and the end of it, committing to that purpose and that timeline. But times change. We are in unusual circumstances. I think a lot of this has to do with the transition of our former superintendent to our current superintendent. There's a lot of history that she may not be aware of. We had a conversation with him about not being able to find an SRO, um, having to call people back to cover what we have as, as our fundamental responsibility is to be able to provide police officers to respond to emergent circumstances. Phone calls for urgent need. I'm in trouble and something's beating me up, whatever the case may be. First and foremost, we have to remain able, able to do that. The plan that I put forward is a means to, it's open for discussion. Invitation was made. I'm happy to continue that discussion.
Ask the chair to.
May I ask one?
Motion that's in front of you and seconded.
This proposal was shared in part in its early phases with a member of the school board who represented to me that the costs were not a concern. So we went forward. Bert?
Come on.
I have a problem compelling this board to vote on a motion when we don't have all the information. Apparently there's some discrepancies whether the chief feels he has the manpower to fill up, fill the position, where we are being told, no, we don't have, and we're going to need to hire somebody, incur more costs by the town to cover for this person that we have done for the SRO. This is some information that we don't have and we're being asked to compel ourselves to supplying the SRO regardless of whether we can do it or not.
Mr. Chair, can I have a comment on that? I don't know where Selectman Burrows got his information. He apparently has had a conversation with former chief Wilmot and allegedly with Chief Hunter. I can tell you, as of today, as of Friday, as of the day I wrote that email, I can't remember if he's chief, I believe he's copied on that.
He is.
He is. Uh, our position is, is that we are in very difficult circumstances and I'd be happy to call him up and, because he asked, he said, you want me to come to the meeting tonight? I said, no, I don't think that would be necessary. And he would have been here to tell you directly and I'm happy to call him up and dial him in. But he can, he will tell you that we are doing serious backfill right now just to maintain staff we have. We're doing everything we can. If we get this provisional officer in, that will make a big difference.
When, when would that happen?
It's advertised now.
Okay, so it could happen fairly soon.
What I'm told is he thinks he has the names of two officers who are interested, both of which are certified. It could happen tomorrow. But, um, you know, we, we just can't willy-nilly, go running around filling positions, so on and so forth. And so despite how many times I say this, and I'm not sure it seems to be sinking in, that we are a hundred percent committed to this program and doing this as fast as we possibly can, with the caveat of not putting the rest of the community at risk for the day-to-day emergent calls that come into our dispatch center.
Jeff, can I, you've allowed twice to speak to the, wait a minute, to speak to the motion that's on the floor. May I take that position now?
Tim had his hand up.
He, Tim put his hand up. I've been here waiting. Tim, can you wait, please? Okay. We are not really talking about the motion right now. What I'm trying to do is boil it down so that we can get rid of some of the discussion. Does this board support an SIU, uh, SIU office, officer in the schools the first, first day of school? And if so, then that's the objective to obtain. And we get rid of all of this smoke and mirrors that's in the room right now, the difference in opinions. Get it out where it can be negotiated. That's what you want. So my motion, please close the motion, take a vote, and then I still retain the right to speak to the issue. And as I said at the beginning, please, Mr. Chair, take a vote.
There are other people who'd like to speak at this point. State your name for the record, please.
Tim Beard. There's just a lot of contradiction in the room because apparently we have the staffing if the school pays a hundred and fifty percent of the bill, but we don't have the staffing if the school wants to pay less than the bill. That's not a staffing issue, that's a money issue. And that's just a matter of which pocket, me, the taxpayer, you want to take it out of the school or the town? The school, the town is still understaffed at the police department for years and it will always be understaffed because no one wants to be a police officer anymore. That's not going to change. So there's a lot of contradictions in the room. I guess Mr. Burrows is lying and he said he had a conversation with Chief Hunter and former chief Wilmot. Someone's lying. Someone's saying something. Because this one says something, this one says something, this one says something and it didn't all add up. So I also don't understand, so it's, it's contract negotiation. It's the same town. What, well, I don't understand this whole complication of a, a contract negotia, we're not negotiating with United Construction or someone else. We're talking entities within the same town. I don't understand the complication here, why we need lawyers and all this crap. It's the same, it's my damn tax money and all your tax money. I don't understand the issue. But the SRO is that, that is of utmost importance in today's day and age. There's been. There's been one there for more than 25 years. Now it's just an issue, or 20 years. Now it's just an issue who's going to pay for it. So how can you sit there and say, you have the staffing at 150% of the pay, but I don't have the staffing at less?
No, it's not that. It's the fact that to staff the position requires someone coming in on overtime, either be the SRO or to cover for the officer that is the SRO in the street. And that officer will get paid at overtime rate. And so that has to be picked up, whether it's paid for by the town or the school. And that's, that's assuming you have an officer that wants that overtime.
They also are saying, talking about a provisional officer. Provisional officer and hiring a provisional officer, then maybe the provisional, when Rachel comes back, maybe they have, we give her the provision. Your three positions short. What do you mean hire provisional? You need three officers, period. You're short-staffed. Those are positions in your budget that aren't filled because of staffing, not because of anybody else.
And that's, and those officers are in training and will be out as soon as they can. The provisional office basically covers for the one away on deployment. And that's pretty much the quickest way to get another officer here, which will alleviate some of the, you know, issues with staffing. It's not perfect, but it's never going to be perfect.
No, not in that age.
Donna, you?
Yes, thank you. My, my goal is the safety of our kids. I just come tonight asking for an SRO. I was told, whether it's on paper or verbally, I was told verbally by, by Hunter with the chief in the room, that the only way I was going to get a, an SRO would be if I paid 150. At that point in time, there was no negotiation, there was no talk of that. That's what he told me I was going to pay. So he may be saying that now, and it may be in writing, but I can almost guarantee you that that's not what's going to happen because that is not what was told to me. I don't take kindly to being accused of fabricating fabrication or lying about anything that I said. Because one thing that I've always learned is that if you lie, you can't tell the same the next time. And I will say anything over and over again, and I will show you proofs of even though that I have. All I am asking is this evening that you vote to allow us to have an SRO come September into our building. Actually, I can have my SRO a little bit sooner because I would like him to provide training to my staff so that way the staff can be prepared if something was to happen in our schools. We are doing everything in our powers to protect the structure of our buildings, inside and out. I 100% understand that an SRO is not a 100% guarantee. But the one thing that I'd like to use is this. If somebody walks up to a car and they pull on the handle, they're going to go to the next car, they're going to pull on that handle. It's the car where they pull on the handle that the door opens, that's the one they're going to go in. I ask that you please, I should say, I'm begging that you please protect our students and staff by having an SRO in our building. I know that we, that Hunter and I could, can sit down and come to an agreement on, on how much we would pay for the SRO. As I stated, I know that my board will pay the fee for the SRO. My, the SRO is not going to be coming in on overtime, he's coming in on straight time. His, the coverage that would be in his place would be the one that we'd be getting overtime. So we are not paying for our officer, in a sense, we're paying for the, we're paying one for our officer and a half for the other officer that is covering.
I don't think it's that simple.
Well, that's, that's how it was explained to me.
It's the police department. The police department's got to pay, and that comes out of the town's budget. You know, and I understand the town has a budget, the school has a budget, and there isn't room for extra money. There is no such thing as extra money. So here we are. I mean, do we just like leave the town uncovered from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM?
I've never stated that, sir.
I'm not saying you did. I'm asking the question. Would we be fine having the police officers on call instead of actually on duty? I mean...
And I stated that...
You know, when I went to school, there was no such thing as an SRO. You stepped out of line, somebody slapped you around and put you back in line.
I agree.
What happened?
Obviously, it didn't work.
And we, we said, and I have said to Hunter, I have absolutely no problem if we have the SRO in our building, if we have our SRO, and there is something that happens and you need to call him out. That would be perfectly fine with me. That would be fine with me, that you can call him out, right? But one of the other things that we wanted to think about, you know, at least until the staffing one, because one of the other things that we wanted to think about was not only having them there, but also providing some education to our, our fifth graders. So that way our fifth graders are getting, almost like what's, what's a DARE program in a sense, to help combat some of the issues that we're seeing as our kids start to get older.
Jim, you had a...
Yes, just for the right, your education and the rest of the board, I did have a one-on-one conversation with both chiefs, and they both told me that they had staffing appropriate to do this. I'm pretty well aware of the staffing and staffing needs of the department. I'd be happy, when I get back from the script, to go over and provide the chief and the board and the manager with a schedule that I can quite easily do that would cover the town as existing and provide the SRO. Aside from the agreement between the school and the town, the chief can detail an officer down there, the SRO, for a day or two days or as much as needed. Until we get the agreement signed, those two can operate independent of each other, it's not Spartan Castle. So he can assign an officer down there to work in the interim until we get this agreement worked out. I'm very much looking forward to seeing the joint board meeting between the school board and the select board to iron out the rest of the issues. But as far as this motion that was made, it can be done, we can support, we can staff an SRO in the school for the first few days of school without any issue at all. I'd be happy to support that with some work documents when I return.
I do. Despite my earlier suggestion that we just remand this to the appropriate parties to resolve, I, I'm feeling compelled to get into a deeper conversation about what was said, what, how it was said. I really don't think that would be beneficial to move this topic forward. I'm happy to do it if, if necessary. I'm happy to call Chief Hunter and have him speak with you directly. This is a topic we have spoken on a daily basis. It's a topic that we have spoken to our police candidates because we want to make sure that they're familiar with, fluent in SRO work. And I have very high level of confidence in Chief Hunter and his ability to staff and direct his people. He's been in the law enforcement business for 44 years. So I don't think he needs any assistance. He did go out of his way and did explain how this works to the superintendent. And so I'm very comfortable having him, and his input and guidance on what is a sustainable level of funding, a sustainable level of staffing. And I encourage you to, as I said, remand this back to our respective offices and we'll take care of this. We're wasting a lot of that valuable time.
Mara, can you read back that motion that Jim made?
Which one?
One Jim made.
Okay.
I think Jim just said he would make the motion.
He, let's see, he made a motion to vote to support the SRO in the Newport school system. It was very short, to the point. He's still online, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
Was that it? Was that okay, Jim?
I believe it was for the first day, but overall, yes.
Just to video that question.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt? I'm quick. Do you have any students in our school, Hunter?
No.
I suggest that if we don't get this passed, we just go to remote learning, and that'll just solve the problem.
And in fact, he...
Can we just close the school down until you get this thing, issue taken care of?
Well, I think you've gone overboard in regards to that. I take issue with, you knew he didn't have any kids here. So what?
I didn't know that. All right. We have a caller on Zoom. Could you state your name for the record, please? Ready?
Mrs. Irwin Fletcher wrote, I am intrigued by this discussion. However, I would like to remind selectmen, sayor that we no longer be children in schools and make them sit up and slap them around, quote unquote. I think you were tongue in cheek, but I would be very careful with remarks like that. It is against the law to be children in schools.
Anything else for us?
I call a question.
All right. Oh, wait, I asked Barrett one.
Everybody else, can I speak?
Yes.
It was simple to boil things down, to get rid of the 40 and get to the 1, and like in, all it says is that's how you feel and want to accomplish. In other words, it's a goal. It is not something that you have to live by. You can recall the motion and vote it again and then throw it out. It was just to end this discussion that could go on for another hour. I haven't even begun to discuss the differences between what's going back and forth. So right now, if you'd vote, then I still reserve my right to come back to this issue after you vote, because all it is is guidance. Please, call a motion.
All right. Take a roll call vote. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Herb?
No.
Keith?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
And I'll abstain.
Just a tie vote.
Well, if I might, Chairman.
Now, I reserve my right, please.
In lieu of, in lieu of that vote, we will continue to pursue it all with this school superintendent, nonetheless.
Well, we were voting on whether we're going to guarantee...
No, we weren't.
No.
Voting to support the SRO, having an SRO.
That is not what Jim said. Jim said that we would guarantee we would have an SRO in the school on the first day.
He didn't use the word guarantee.
She should have read the motion before you voted.
She did. And she checked with Jim to see what the wording, actual wording should have been.
So what you did is you tie voted on Jim's. Wait a minute, mine was different than Jim's.
Bert's was different.
Okay. So now that you tied on that, it's dead in the water, okay? Dies for lack of a vote. Now will you please go to mine?
I don't know what yours is.
I believe the secretary does. Maura? Am I there on your, somewhere?
Yes.
It was that the board supported the SRO, decision of the SRO.
Mr. Spalding asked for a motion for the board of selectmen to support having an SRO in the school. Now, did you say also on the first, on the first day, Mr. Spalding?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Doesn't the board have to make a motion?
Yes.
I don't think, I don't know how. He's recommending that someone make that motion on the board.
And I thought that's what Jim did.
I thought that's exactly what Jim's.
And, and it did, it did have a first, it had a first and a second.
One, Jim's motion was to guarantee that there would be one. Bert's motion is to support the proposition of having SRO in the schools.
I would make a motion that we support the concept of having a SRO in the school buildings on the first day of school.
Okay, before you vote, I want to withdraw my, my vote and the second, first and second would have to withdraw their agreement to get my motion off the floor now.
No, we already voted.
No, that was Jim's. Jim's. You boiled it down in the end, you were voting on Jim's.
I can make another motion as a board member.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get mine out of the way because yours is the same thing as mine.
You're not allowed to make a motion.
I'm not trying to, I'm just asking the board.
Sticking it out with this, I know you had to go. But we, we'll do everything we can to get you an SRO.
Thank you. Thank you, Hunter. Thank you to the board members. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So Barry, what is your motion?
Asking a 70-year-old guy to repeat himself. Yeah, okay. I make a motion that the board votes to support having a, an SRO in the school district first day of school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Too late. Herb did it. Any discussion?
Exactly what my motion said, but went on.
Yes, it is.
All right, Jim, yes or no?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
I'll go yes on that.
Now, we're still in open forum. May I speak?
Before you speak, on another subject or on the same subject?
Um...
Are we done with this subject?
Yes, we are done with this subject.
No, let me check. Tim, anything else on this?
No, this one.
Donna?
Not on this one.
Oh, okay. Then we'll move on to continue with open forum on other subjects that are not on the agenda. Anyone have an item to bring? Yes, ma'am. Yes, Donna?
I would like to see if possible if the, if we can vote, if the board can vote on a joint meeting with the school board or decide on a date for the school board. We actually have a school meeting on the ninth and the 22nd of September.
I think the ninth works better for me. I may have a zone meeting.
The eighth, 9/8, on the eighth.
The eighth, the eighth, which is the second Thursday.
Second Thursday, yeah.
Second Thursday.
That was better than the fourth.
Exactly.
As an official board or...
Yes, we would probably meet down at...
At the, in the school, yeah.
We have more, it would be a joint meeting of the two boards to discuss items of common interest, such we used to do with pre-covid.
You're going to have food?
Jim, can you make it on the eighth of September to a joint meeting?
I'll make that work.
Okay. Anyone that can't make it? All right?
Thank you.
We'll do that.
What time is the meeting?
They go 5:00 o'clock time.
5:00.
I guess I can make it that early. You guys have to start meeting at a normal time.
That is normal.
We could, could we start our meeting at 5:00 and the joint meeting at 6:00?
We can.
To accommodate the...
That way you can take care of your own business or the school business first.
There goes your dinner, Barry. That's okay.
Where do you guys meet?
Lou Thompson Room.
At the high school, in the CTV center.
You know, in the folks center, it's sort of take a, take a right, follow the hallway to the back. It's right there.
I usually put a sign.
Oh, yeah, anyway, yeah.
Yes, it's the, where NCTV used to be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything else?
I, yes, I do. I just wanted to let you know that the school district will be at the Apple High Craft Fair and will be on our lawn, and we will be handing out backpacks and school supplies and things for students. And so please stop by.
All right. Anyone else from open forum? Herb, anything else you had?
Yep. It is unfortunate that the board has met our superintendent, I leave out a word there intentionally, under this but, it does show the drive that she has to take this district to a different place. You need to know this person. We as a community need to know this person. This person is going to change our education and how it works and what gets done. And this is part of it tonight, her willingness to come in here and defend what she thinks is right. And to have a board that is unanimous behind her, we have turned a corner in this community. And so I would say, Herb, come and talk with her. Jeff, come and sit down and talk with her.
Love to.
Yes, do so. Call, set up an appointment and, because this is a huge change. And in a few years, we will be, and of course I'm looking ahead because the interim is an interim, I understand that. We have a great opportunity here. We're turning a corner. We have a great opportunity here, we're turning a corner.
You didn't want me to talk to her?
Yes, yes, I kind of did the two of you together because it was going along, but you, y'all gotta do it. Jim, that goes for you too, I left you out. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else for open forum? All right, in that case, we'll move on to board of selectmen. Jim, anything you want to say?
I'm good right now, thank you.
All right, how's the weather out there in the Midwest?
Rather nice.
Okay, all right, Barry, anything?
I think I've said too much already.
I just had a quick question about a particular pothole in the road, I don't know if it's right, it's right at the very end of Elm Street where it comes out onto the Route 11, where everybody stops to make the right turn.
Okay, at the bottom of the hill behind the.
At the top of the hill.
At the top of the hill.
At the top, right where everybody. There's a pothole and it's positioned right where everybody drives through.
That's where you want to go around it.
Yeah, and people cutting the yellow line coming in, and so I've had a couple of those calls. So is that a state or a town?
Depends upon who you ask, it belongs to the other.
Because it's like right, kind of like on the edge. I just thought I'd throw out that. It's been repaired a couple times and needs it again, so just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Not familiar with that.
It is a business booster, it sells shock absorbers in the auto parts stores to keep people employed.
Yeah, I'm gonna be visiting them too.
Herb, anything? All right, I just wanna, as I think Donna mentioned earlier, the Apple Pie Craft Fair is the fourth Saturday of the month, which is the twenty-seventh, I believe. It's all day on the common. I understand that you need to come early if you want to get your pies, they go quickly, so it's a good, good opportunity to see a lot of your friends and neighbors out on the common. Jim, anything to add?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, all right, Hunter, anything?
No, thank you. One quick thing, Jeff. I don't believe we've received the request to use the common for the Apple Pie Craft Fair yet. Got it just a couple days ago.
We did get it.
Very short notice, it's gonna be difficult for us to process it, but we'll figure it out.
That's for us to just go be there.
No, no, that's for the Apple.
Permission to use the common.
We've waived the hundred-dollar fee.
Yeah, they, they want you to waive all the fees and so on and so forth.
Yeah, also on the fact I mentioned, we should have a booth, that seemed to like.
Well, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, I mean.
They said they're all sold out, all that?
Yeah, which also, I actually have to have someone move that morning, so I don't know when I would be able to get there sort of correct, not getting my pie, but Donna?
We have plenty of space, you're more than welcome to come join us on this any line.
My granddaughter's getting married, so I don't think I'll.
I'll be there in the morning.
Okay, all right, thank you. Opportunity to, I think we'll talk with school and town people.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, because we will have some school board members attending as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so if you have some free time that Saturday and don't mind sitting with some of the school board members supposedly, you can sit there and they can, people can come up and question both of you. Thank you. All right, anything else, just like, moving on, informational. Parlin Field proposal to join FAA, National Program of Integrated.
National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems.
National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. This was a proposal, we first came to our attention because the town manager applied for an earmark from Senator Shaheen to pave the runway at Parlin Field based upon an esquit we had at the time from Pike Industries. We got the earmark and then, like all the earmarks then, it was sitting there waiting for Congress to actually pass a federal budget instead of continuing resolutions. And I think sometime early spring, they passed the budget. And then basically, the earmarks got handed out to various federal agencies and an earmark for the airport went to the Federal Aviation Administration that basically said, in order to get this, we have to join the NIPPIUS program, which then started, I believe, started looking at, he talked to the airport managers, talked to the state aeronautics people, there's been two or three sessions with the FAA and the state aeronautics people. Herb and I took part in one last Thursday. What we also, what I, we also learned, Herb and I learned last Thursday, was during the pandemic, with some of the federal relief money coming out, Newport received, had received so far, two small grants, thirty thousand or so, or twenty-two thousand for one, and those we got because we are already, have a number in their NIPPIUS system. And as I understood, actually from the aeronautics people and what our airport managers said, normally if we are between two airports that are already in the system, which Clamott, Lebanon, R, we are too close and we're not qualified. Because back in the eighties, somehow we got a number, we basically got a distribution during the pandemic and our earmark was permitted to go through because we were in the system. What we have to do now is determine if we want to join formally the NIPPIUS system, which would enable us to receive the earmark from Senator Shaheen, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, could have put us also in the queue for two grant systems, one that would provide us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year going forward, which would probably start coming to the airport in two years. There was another one, I forget the name of that one, that runs for five years, from federal fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-six, which means the first year of that program ends September thirtieth. That would be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. The downside of joining the program, the FAA has a list of thirty-nine assurances we need to comply with for the ones that apply to general aviation fields, some are from our commercial fields. We would need to do things such as first update the master plan, have a layout plan, have a capital improvement plan as to exactly what these funds would be going for. The runway is the big ticket item and along with that, we are looking at, we have looked at the reconstruction of the south end of that runway where it basically crosses over a culvert and basically, that end of the runway currently heaves every winter and the airport managers are closing off, is seven, six hundred or eight hundred feet, just because of the heaving there. Through being in the NIPPIUS program, we would be able to apply our earmark plus additional funding. Basically, we probably need to hire a consultant to assist us with meeting all the FAA paperwork going forward. Work on the, I guess, the plan to correct the culvert issue at the south end. Since touches water, there'd be all sorts of wetlands or shoreline protection permits that would be required, so it's a lot more than what we thought a year or so ago, just having Pike redo the runway, you know. So, the thing is, we joined the NIPPIUS program, we have, if we want to do anything, we have to do it to FAA specs. But then again, the way the funding works is, the FAA would provide ninety percent of the funding, the state kicks in five percent, and the town would have to come up to the five percent for matching going forward to this program. Which means, looking at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar year program, the hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar year program, and with the earmark from Senator Shaheen, about six hundred and fifty, over five years, we could be looking at probably one point eight, one point nine million dollars worth of funding to invest in capital improvements in the airport for, for basically a town match of maybe up to three thousand dollars over five years. Some of the things are, once you're in the program, pretty much if you want to do non-aviation activities at your airport, you need to get approval from the FAA or since we are block grant, I guess state with the FAA, the state aeronautics board acts as the FAA, we need approval from them. Certain things we do, like a car show, fireworks, even camping, you know, having pilots camping at the airport are things that we need to be approved. Also say if like someone wanted to rent out a hangar, like I think the London Hospital did a fair, in a hangar at the airport one time, that would certainly be a screw in. Now, if we get into the program and want to get out, basically, once we take their money, there's a certain life to various projects we do that would have to basically run their life of that project before we can get out. Like crack sealing has a three-year life, we take FAA money to crack seal, then decide we don't want to get out of the program, we have to stop taking their money and then wait those three years before we can get out. Now, some of the concerns that I've heard from the managers and the volunteers at the airport, you know, they, they feel the FAA is too much of a big brother and would change the character of our airport. I'm not sure, I'm seeing that myself, but one of the concerns is the impact on them, on the non-airport activities, say a car show and fireworks or such. And one thing I was thinking of, since the earmark probably would not come through for a year or two, or we don't have to take it for a year or two. The one grant program doesn't start for two years, we wouldn't start receiving it for two years. The other one, we could start receiving right away, but if we don't utilize those funds or utilize them in a, say in a planning purpose, meanwhile, once we're in the system and we have to start calling the FAA, if we call them up and say, we want to do an event here or a car show here, and if they say no, it becomes the fact that despite everything we've been told so far, that yes, you can keep doing what you're doing, we've taken their money, but we haven't invested it. So we could, at that time, you know, look at it and say, well, they're going back on their work, they allow this sort of stuff, so why don't we give them back their money? You know, we don't, we haven't, we haven't invested their money in their capital improvement with the life we have to wait for. You know, that's one, one thing, because I think even getting started, you start with the updated master plan, capital improvement plan, you get a consultant to work with you, that's probably cost we can absorb if we need to. The other thing is, with the FAA, I think I said it, if you take their money, any improvements have to be done to their spec, which means the runway job, instead of, you know, Pike just coming out, yeah, we can pave that like we do any road, there's like special airport pavement requirements, I need to do that. I think talking with one of the managers Friday, based upon what they're look, see on their runway, the runway probably has a couple more years of life before it really needs to be paved, so it's not like it's an immediate concern. And Pike estimated about six fifty a year or so ago, if we do the work at the south end, you know, we're probably pushing up to about a million dollar in cost. Now, the airport managers have mentioned that there's a program through the state where you apply and you can get up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in, for two years, and then you have to reapply and wait your turn on the list. That has a twenty percent match, so, and that's, you know, pretty much, I think, a fair bit of it. I don't know if Hunter or any of the managers want to add anything or such, or.
I could probably add a little bit, but I first wanted to start off.
Can you state your name for the record?
Keith Marsden, airport head manager. First, I want to start off by saying that the airport and its entire history has probably had, never had as much support either from our town manager or I think the town, as we've enjoyed over the last five to ten years. We also have tried, over that time period, to reduce our cost to the town as much as possible. We have an incredible amount of volunteerism. This past week, we just completed a week-long aviation career education program for kids and we do everything we can, including our own plumbing, mowing, to reduce the cost of the town. We have probably more revenue rolling into the town than this airport has ever generated over its lifespan over the last ten or fifteen years due to the hangar leases. So we generate revenue from hangar leases, about thirty-two thousand dollars a year in hangar leases and about fifty-two, fifty-one thousand dollars in taxes and haul around. I'm sure, verify those numbers, Paul Parkage. So we're doing what we can to bring what we can for revenue into the town. As far as these two programs, I can tell you, after twenty-two years of working with the FAA, I know all those people you talk to very well. As a matter of fact, somebody from the FAA called me on Friday to ask me, are you seriously considering becoming an obligated airport? Because he was aware of the meeting that two people from the board of selectmen had. So there are definitely pros to joining the FAA program, however, it is a money pit. Crack sealing, for example, we do that now for the cost of crack sealing, for a thousand dollars, us volunteers go out and crack seal that runway. If you want to do a crack sealing project for this airport, you're looking at about a two hundred thousand dollar project, of which the town is responsible for five percent of that. So automatically, your costs are increased just to crack seal, okay? There is an alternate program, that's the airport improvement program. This year, there's two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars available from the state, of which the town would be responsible for twenty percent. That program occurs every year, the amount available fluctuates because it's based off of the aviation fuel tax that's generated, all right? And then a certain percentage of that is allowed to go back and roll into the airports, that's how that program is funded. That is how we see as a more viable program. I'll end my comments by adding with one request, please call the airport managers up at Whitefield, they are an airport simulatus, they're an FAA obligated airport. Call and ask Wendy Roberts what her experience has been like as part of the FAA NIPPIUS, because they do, they try to do fireworks and other events. The paperwork and the permission and the requirements from the FAA are extremely onerous. This is a dance with the devil if there ever was one, so I'll end with that.
Hunter? So, as, as part of my charge that I've received from the selectmen, that is to fiscally and otherwise manage the affairs of the community. To my knowledge, I haven't had any concerns or expressions of worry or whatever from the board. As you know, we're about twenty-one million dollars in grants this year, our last twelve months alone, which equates to two fiscal years, the entire community. As I have become more familiar with the airport and its present condition, it has become very clear to me that after many years, the capital demands of the airport are now far in excess of what the Ames program could fund properly and fully, and certainly well beyond the ability of the town of Newport to fund anything, because as you know, operates right now as an enterprise account or enterprise fund, which means it uses its own revenues and doesn't rely on taxpayer money. And my understanding is that the history is that you don't really want to have a public discussion about whether or not taxpayer dollars should be expended to support the airport, I don't know how that would end, probably may end not well. So my goal is to make that airport self-sustaining and there is one million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and eighty-eight to be exact, one million nine hundred and thirty-eight, eight eighty-three, eight eighty-eight worth of grant dollars that are available. And I think that we are so far into the cost of preparing and maintaining that airport that there's no way out at this point. If this was ten years ago, twenty years ago, there might have been a way out. You might have been able to sustain the airport through the Ames program, smaller grants. grants, 250 a year, things of that nature. But we are going to eat all of that million dime, and there's no question that it's going to cost more because we're doing it according to the FAA standards, but FAA is paying, with the state is paying 95% of that. So even at $2 million, it's nothing that we could possibly, we, we, there's no way we could possibly generate those kinds of funds locally or through the AIMS program. And every year that goes by, we, it gets worse and worse and worse. And so my attempt here is not only to make it fiscally sound, but to preserve the airport in and of itself against having to have that critical conversation someday, that do we want to keep this airport or do we not want to keep it? Through this program, this approach, we'll, foreseeable future anyway, we'll never have to have that conversation, because it will be kept up, we'll be in business, we won't have these fears rolling around. As Jeff pointed out, the money that we would receive from these programs can be used to hire consultants to do all the work. And at least three conversations now, when we brought up the issues of, are you going to encroach on our community airport? Are you going to require us to put up a fence? Are you going to forbid us from having a car show? Are you going to forbid us from having a firework show? Jeff has been in on some of those, Herb has been in on some of those conversations, whether they be in person or via Zoom, and they have repeatedly said, "No, we want you to have those continued programs, we want you to be a community airport, we don't want you to look like Logan East or West, whatever. We want it, but if you're going to do something, it has to be done in accordance with FAA regulations." Which from what I can tell is not really like too bad a goal to have, because they want to affirm that they're done properly, that they're done safely, that they're done with current best practices, and they're willing to pay for it. So I don't have, share the same concerns, because I don't see it. An example is Keane Airport has a car show every other weekend, all summer long. We only do it once, and we do it on a grassy runway, doesn't impair the rest of the runway shoes. So I just don't see it. I, you know, maybe there's a, an example somewhere, someday, that that might have happened somewhere. In fact, when, I think we brought up, Jeff, you might have been on that call, when we said, "Well, somebody called and, and talked to somebody at the FAA about the candy drop, you know, we do the Easter thing," and, and the guys on the other end kind of laughed and they said, "Well, you should have called back and asked somebody else," because we would have approved that. There were five or six of them on the phone. I don't know who answered, I don't know what the question was, I don't know what that person's background, but it was the popular position that, no, we don't want to deny any of those things, it's not going to be a problem. I gave them a list of driving schools potential, so in the worst case, driving school using a couple of days a month throughout the year, car show, fireworks, candy drop, and I threw in, I think, I made up a couple more things just to kind of fill it in, make it like a worst case. I suggested we'll put them, we'll give you a list in January of the whole year's calendar. Fine, that's great, we wish everybody would do that. Gives us plenty of time to review it, and you should have an answer within a week or two. So I keep looking for Plan B. This program and dealing with the FAA is onerous, there's no question about it, although I have to repeat again, they'll let you use your money to hire consultants, so you don't have to deal with it at all. But Plan B doesn't exist, there is no viable alternative that will get us the kind of money we need in a period of time that we have available to us. It's been reviewed by myself, Paul Brown concurs from a financial perspective, the state, the FAA, you know, I, I, I don't know, you can find, you can find a negative about any program, you know, where somehow somebody, you know, did something untoward, unexpected, so on and so forth, but my fear is that in two or three years, you're going to be facing an inspection at that airport where somebody's going to say, "You know, boys, so your conditions have now dropped to a point where there's a public safety concern, and you're going to have to come up with either a large sum of money real quick, or you're going to have to close." And I don't want either one of those things to happen, and I think as long as we're in this program and adjust point, get into it, we address all of our needs, 10 years down the road, if you're not liking the experience you're having, after you've burned out the period of time that you're required to stay in the program after you take their money, can you walk away? It's not forever.
That's a 20-year obligation on airport pavement.
It's not forever. And closure is permanent, so, I, you know, I just, I just think that you'd be walking away with $2 million. All the programs will be recommended to you for working well, doing what they're intended to do, and this is another.
Yep. Tim, you got to leave that there for me.
Yeah, just, the FAA, FAA isn't going to do anything that, they're going to get something in return. No one ever walks up to your door and say, "Hey, let's give you $2 million, so what's the catch?" No catch. Is there always a catch? It's like, we're going to sell our soul to the bigger government so they can tell us what to do, get permission to use our own airport fireworks? That doesn't, that just sounds to me like we're just selling out the airport to the FAA. And we all know how big, you know, we know how the big government works so well, doesn't it? There has to be something in there that you're going to lose something, there's no way that they're just going to say, "Hey, here's $2 million." No, I'm sure there's many grants that Hunter's gotten that it's like, "Yeah, yeah, I know, this is this," but it sounds like there's a lot of little red tape in the agreement. And if Whitefield doesn't want to do it, I think we really probably should be looking at that, like, why is Whitefield not happy with this? Or why are other people not happy with this? Because if it looks too good to be true, it usually is.
Louis said there's 39 assurances.
Right, which will cost money, updating the master plan, like all these things are going to cost down money.
Oh, no.
You won't do the runway, and you won't even touch the runway until 2026. Master plan first, Exhibit A property map update, airport layout plan update, potentially most likely an environmental assessment, I can tell you from experience, because this is what I do for work in airport master plan, is at least a 12-month process. That's once you bring onboard a consultant, and that's what I do for work as an aviation consultant. You have DVE requirements, DVE reporting requirements, CLO requirements, the paperwork is absolutely ridiculous. You talk to one person, you ask one question in FAA, they get five different answers, which is actually what we ran into one week, they didn't even answer straight away whether or not you need to do an airport master plan. Jaffrey did a similar project for $573,000. Of that, $458,444 was paid by the state, $114,611 was local match, okay? So they able, they're able to do a similar project for well under a million dollars, where we're looking at probably over $2 million for the same similar project, right? So 5% of $2 million roughly, I believe, is around $110,000. I appreciate the airport man, the town managers looking out for us, we couldn't ask for anything more, so thank you again, Hunter. However, the grant assurances and working with the FAA are incredibly restrictive. Again, please talk to some of the other airport managers that are obligated airports.
So Mr. Sheriff, I can respond to that. There is an even number, nearly even number off by one, of NIPUS obligated airports in the state has not obligated. So half the people in the room theoretically think it's a good idea, the other half, hey, no, we all have our own reason for those things. I was the manager in Jaffrey, I'm very familiar with that airport, I'm very familiar with the management of that airport. I don't see that as a correlation to our airport, or to our goals, or municipal abilities. We own that airport, the airport in Jaffrey is privately, very different situation, very different players. So the list of things that you see, on the 39, 37 items on the list, half of them are already done, because they are good and sound things that should be done for any organization, but many of them are 10 or more years out of date. And why is that? Why? Not because we don't have diligent and delicate and dedicated volunteers, we just don't have the ability. You don't have the time, you don't have the expertise, you don't have the money to do a lot of the things that the FAA would ask you to do and that they will pay for. So you can, you can kind of dumb the standard down to say we have no problems if you want to define them as no problems, or you can look at structural issues that are up there, and they are enormous, and they should have been dealt with years ago, and they're going to get bigger and bigger. So again, it's my intent to apply for and to join the NIPUS obligated program, unless there's some reason you feel compelled to say, "And there's no basis for this whatsoever, there's no empirical data whatsoever to suggest that they're going to stop us from doing any of the things we traditionally do." And for the next, as to point just point, the next two years while we're waiting and getting things, getting rolling, some of the things that we would do initially are very low cost and do not have the kind of tail that's been thrown out to you, perhaps to make you worry, they're two and three and five-year obligations, and if there's any kind of untoward behavior by the FAA, maybe we can reconsider it. But for $2 million, I mean, how important is our car show? Not that that's suggested, because there is no empirical data whatsoever and repeated representation by many, several different people, both at the FAA level and the State Aeronautical Division level, saying that those things will not happen. So, and they put it in writing. So I, I think a lot of this is fear of the unknown, it's change, and that's understandable, but one of the changes we don't want to have happen there is for that facility to continue to degrade. It's nearly there now, and you need to wrench that thing back into the right direction. We wouldn't be where we are today if we had the ability, financial or otherwise, to manage that airport properly to this point. We can't do it.
Just a couple more comments. First, I want to recognize that the airport is as good as it is because of the managers and the volunteers for putting a lot of time there, you know, you know, contributed monetarily to things too. You know, they basically kept that airport alive, viable. Things like the ice camp that was last week, you know, that was an incredible thing, you know, all the kids, I'm sure, appreciated. I'm just sorry you didn't have a full house, you know, we had like 11 kids that missed out that opportunity from wherever it was done. And on the other hand, you know, at some point, some of you guys may want to retire, and, you know, we're not sure who's going to come in or whether we're going to have to, you know, instead of you guys standing out there in hot sun with a hot bucket of tar, you know, all day long, you may decide you want to do something else, you know, and at that point, you know, we may have to get FAA-approved torch, you know, put it down with an FAA-approved torch or whatever, so, but if the FAA is paying for it, that's, you know, would be that. One thing I did not mention in talking about the requirements, and we do it now, we run the airport as an enterprise account. Basically, all their revenue and expenses are, you know, isolated from the rest of the town, except for the property taxes. And talking with the State Aeronautics Board, that would continue that way, but outside of property taxes, all the money going into the airport has to stay there, and it's like, you know, buildings and ground can't decide, "I'm going to go borrow the tractor from the airport to do this field because ours is down." So that is a, pretty much a no-no if you get caught at it. However, if it's like the highway guys come in and plow the runway for you, and then to barter, you borrow the tractor, but generally, everything at the airport basically stays there, it can't be used as, for any other department of the town.
With one caveat, if we make those arrangements, we have to pay the providing department a fair market rate for the use of that equipment.
Right.
And the rent, or basically the rent would go to the receiving department, which is a practice that I would very much like to see townwide, I've had that in every community I've worked in before, and it works beautifully to the departmental benefit. It's an enormous amount of money and value that's not being realized.
Right, you know, as I mentioned with Donna, with cleanup of gym after election, you know, the custodians are there, you know, that should be passed through to the correct department, which would be your elections. Okay. So it's the same there.
Right.
This is something, you know, I don't know how, Herb, you weren't on that call Thursday, your thoughts?
I guess my concern would be the, as Hunter had stated, a Plan B. I mean, you pointed out a couple of $200,000 funding opportunities through the state, which wouldn't compel us to work under FAA rules. And then I guess you have to go back and then ask for more money?
They roll it over each year, so, they, their priority ranking for AIM projects is similar to the FAA where it starts from the runway, highest priority, and works its way out. As Jeff said, you know, the one pro to taking FAA money is all the work is done by a consulting firm. The one major drawback is, as I said earlier, it's a money pit, because they're going to require the airport to be up to FAA standards prior to doing any major investment in the airport. That includes obstruction removal, runway safety areas, and everything else outside from that. And again, you do one of their projects, and it's about 10 times more expensive than the town.
But most of those projects are funded under that.
And the town pays 5% of that.
5%. For all the objectives and goals that we should be really looking to achieve, if I'm a member of the flying public, I really, I have the choice between flying through an FAA-approved airport or a locally controlled airport, with all due respect, I'm sorry, I'm going to fly through the FAA, you know, approved airport that has somebody looking over somebody's shoulder and making sure that things are being built and run to current standards.
Oh, our airport, I take, excuse me.
Let me finish my statement.
Our airport is very well managed, Hunter, so we take very exception to that.
That's fine, you can take exception to it, but if you let me finish my sentence, I would have said, taking nothing away from your, your operations, but you don't have the time or the ability or money to, to comply with FAA-designed standards, you just don't have it, do you?
We have.
If you have it, then why haven't you done it? The, the master plan is 10 years out of line.
It's not required, it is not required.
By example, but it is a good practice, it is a good best practice to have a CIP, to have a safety, to have a, a master plan. You don't have it, not because of your, your, not because of your negligence, but, but your volunteers, you do a great job for the time and the ability you have, but you don't have those abilities, and the, and the airport now needs those abilities, and there is no way to survive it, to save it, without throwing at a life, a life ring, you cannot repair that airport, that runway in proper form for $500,000. We'll spend that in the first day. It needs drainage, it needs, the landscaping needs to be changed, the runway needs to be changed, it needs to be resurfaced properly, it's, we're going to eat all of that $2 million, one way or another. And there's no question about it, and FAA is going to pay, between the town, between the state and the FAA, they're going to pay 95%. So what I'm suggesting to the board and to the town, that for the sake of 5%, we step into this and we do it the proper, long-lasting, long-term way, and we deal with the FAA in the meantime about car shows and candy drops. It seems to me to be a fair exchange, but there's no evidence whatsoever, whatsoever, repeatedly, the FAA and the state have repeatedly said, "Car shows are fine, candy drops are fine, we don't want you to put up six-foot-high fences, we don't want you to do any of those things." Every single time, and I ask them for examples, and you've been in the room when they've given me answers. Keane, a car show every other weekend in the summer. We only want to do one. Why would they treat us any differently?
I'm telling, I've had discussions with other airports that have had-
Well, it's not a popularity contest, I can go out, as I said to you, 13 of the state's airports are NIPUS.
Nine, neither are nine NIPUS, there are nine airports as part of the block grant.
I got from Carol today.
Well, I'm telling, there are 20, there's 24 public-use airports and nine of them are obligated block-grant airports.
Well, she gave me a number today, there was either 12, 12 or 13 obligated, 12 or 13 unobligated, so I, I don't know. But this is not a popularity contest, it's a matter of, there's $1,900,000 at stake to do work that we cannot do, and if we do not do it, at some point, we run the risk of somebody, the state coming in on annual inspection and saying, "Sorry, boys, it's all over, you have to pave this in the next 60 days, 30 days, whenever it is, or you're closing, or you're going to have to go to town meeting and ask for a million-dollar bond, and guess what that's going to result in?" I think you've lived through that already.
I have.
So do we want to go there? Do we want to have somebody come, a taxpayer come along and say, "You know, we don't have any commercial flights going in and out of that, it doesn't really do anything for the local economy, let's get rid of it and turn it into subdivisions."
I don't disagree with you that the airport needs a lot of work, Hunter, and as I said, I appreciate-
This is a means to the end. Let me throw in here a few things, you know, even though we're not an FAA airport now, from what I gathered second or third hand, you know, from the few times I'm out there and stuff, from the traffic we have and what, you know, I hear from pilots, like at air shows, when I've been to them, you know, our airport is a gem the way it is, people enjoy coming in here. coming in here, you know, and we don't want to change that character. And, what was the other point? Now, back, the master plan that was done about 10, 10 years ago, he's had a large part of that, because he is in the profession, and he made sure that, and I was on the advisory board at the time, that it was done basically, I'll say, to FAA standards, pretty much. So, that even though it's 10 years out of date, and I've been off the board, there's been a couple of different swipe and on since me, so I don't know why other things get in the way and that didn't get updated in a more timely fashion. But there's a lot in that 10-year-old plan that should ease the whole process of updating it. So, I don't think we're looking at starting from scratch, because there was a professional plan to start.
One of the reasons it hasn't been updated is because we do many more community events at that airport than when that master plan was done. I was not airport management when that airport master plan was done. This ACE Camp is six months plus of planning for just ACE Camp, so that we can pull off a hell of a good program for this community through volunteers.
And so, perhaps going into the NIPUS program, being able to offload some of the administrative stuff to a consultant or something, would allow, you know, your pilots and all to focus more on the events that are fun?
I agree. My worry, Jeff, is that when an FAA project comes, because the runway isn't going to be the only one, again, the runway has to be maintained, which means you're going to have to crack seal it, seal it, mark it, all of those projects have to be kept up to FAA standards for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Again, Whitefield, I just talked to him, a marking project to remark the runway, $300,000 to remark the runway.
I'd like to see that bid, you know.
That's wonderful. It doesn't, it's irrelevant. The FAA is going to pay for it. You're going to end up paying 5% of it. Using that example, it's $15,000. We can't pay, we can't repaint ours for that kind of money. So, what's the difference? Somebody else is paying for it. I can disagree with it all day long, but somebody else is paying for it. So, what's the problem?
The town has to go with the $15,000.
$15,000, a $300,000 project is $15,000. You don't have 15 to do the painting up there now.
Gentlemen, Keith, you have a question?
I'm just listening to this, and it's like, what is the biggest fear you have of going into this? Because if it's about money, it sounds to me like his explanation is, we can pay $15,000 or we can pay $20,000.
What I've heard is, the biggest fear is the FAA sort of, creating an environment that we lose, say, the culture and the atmosphere of that small country airport we have, I mean, it's.
That's a substantial part of it.
And so, can I clarify that for, do not be misled, that if you're in the NIPUS obligated program, that FAA comes and seeks you out and says, we want you to do this, we want you to do that. You must make a request to the FAA. For instance, I inquired about fencing, because it was brought to my attention that FAA might put, make us put up a fence. It's not true. The state says, we don't want you to fence the place, we would prefer that you not fence the place. We like the appearance of our country airports, quote-unquote, Carol DeWolfe. If you want to fund, if you want to fence the airport, if that's your desire, and you come to us and you ask to fence the airport, you must do it according to FAA standards. But we're not coming looking for you. If you ask, you have to do it the FAA way, is the usual phrase. And once you, when you do it the FAA way, which is no question, it's going to be more expensive, they're going to pay 95% of it. So, you have to spend millions and millions of dollars to come up with a 5% share that even, even comes close to the local costs outside of the program.
I understand that part.
Doesn't make any sense financially.
Because, I mean, I don't spend any time at the airport.
Why not?
Because I don't have an airplane, I guess.
I don't need one.
And it's just, if we have an opportunity to bring it up to where it really should be anyway, why don't we just do that?
Mrs. Irwin, I see you have your hand up. Was that grape juice you were drinking? You're muted. You're muted, you're muted.
So, while she's figuring that out, and the email today, Carol DeWolfe says 12 public-use landing areas are obligated to FAA, 13 public-use landing areas are not obligated. That's what I think. I can only tell you what they told me.
Can I ask one just direct, one, one direct question?
And just, just to state your name for the record.
I call manager of the airport and, and chair of the airport advisory board. Okay, so the meeting we had with Trish Lambert.
Excuse me, I thought I was recognized. What happened?
You were muted, we couldn't hear a word.
My apologies.
Okay.
How, how far, how did we get so far off the agenda? I'm looking at it, and it says town manager, then community center, and then the training on August 22nd, and then Parlin Field?
We went out, we adjusted the agenda since we have people from the airport here tonight.
Okay, well, I hope before you start talking about the community center, you'll at least talk about the training, because it's not anywhere near as controversial as the three topics you have just added.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
Just one direct question. We met with Trish Lambert and Carol DeWolfe several, a few months ago, and Heath was there, I was there, you, of course, were there, Hunter, and who else was there? And probably one of the other.
Fire chief.
I think the fire chief was there. And at one point, I recall specifically, that you asked pointedly to Carol and Trish, if you had the opportunity to take this money or not take this money, what would you do? And I recall very distinctly, it took Trish quite a while to come up with an answer, probably a good half-minute of hmm, and that's, that's Trish, that's, that's the personality type. And she said, well, I probably would, just about like that. Correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken. You asked Carol the same question, and Carol said, no. Period, end of story. Carol's an engineer, and that's, and that's Carol's take. I just point that out, because you've referenced Carol DeWolfe several times, Carol's take on this as an engineer, as a professional, the OT Aeronautics, and Carol says, no, flat no. So, we can, we can proceed from there, and I've got more, but go ahead.
So, in relation to that conversation, that conversation did happen largely the way it was described. However, you have to put the question in context. That was before Carol was aware of the replacement of the culvert and the other drainage structures down there, and the requirement to get an environmental permit and a shoreline permit and the whole nine yards. In subsequent conversations, she agrees that the only way out of this, the only funding that's going to make this happen, is to join the NIPUS obligated airport program. Carol was unaware, being an engineer, she wasn't necessarily an environmental engineer or any of the, or structural engineer, so on and so forth. She was unaware of the extent of the work that is going to be required to be done there. You can't just go down there and slap an inch of black pavement on the thing. It's going to require all kinds of permits, changes the entire flavor of the project, and it's going to, you know, we thought we could just put down a new set of pavement for six or $650,000. It's going to be double or triple that by the time we're done with all of the drainage and the culverts and the intakes, and to change the elevation of the airport runway, the whole nine yards, it's just, it's just not going to happen.
Here's a question. If we went with the other program, AIM program, which is state money, and use that on the runway, when we get down to the south end, can we just ignore the drainage with that program?
Is it draining into wetlands?
It's not draining at all. Yeah, it's not draining at all.
Just, just, you know.
A good portion, a good quarter, there, there are three things that affect pavement, prepped up predominantly, water, water, and water. The airport has a serious drainage problem. I don't believe it was ever properly engineered to begin with, but whatever's there now is non-functional. And you, you're not going to have me on board to sign off on a contract of 600 grand to put pavement on something that has a water problem, because you're just dooming yourself to having the problem reoccur in the next few years, and you're going to do it over again. Hence, the FAA is going to step in and say, if we're going to use it, and we're going to do it, and you're going to use our money, we're going to do it right, we're going to do an engineering evaluation, we're going to do a drainage evaluation, yes, we're going to do an environmental, we do environmentals all the time. Did one on the railroad, when we were thinking about buying the railroad depot. We're about to do one on the backside of the Opera House. We do them all the time. It's routine, it's 1,500 bucks. Now, this one will be a little bit more, because it involves wetlands, a river, and active drainage. You can do it right and make your investment, and it will last a longer period of time, and you're doing a public service by expending the money under the right circumstances. Barry?
I've heard, this is supposed to be an informational meeting, I've garnered a lot of information, but I've yet to hear, you said the airport needs a lot of work. Okay? Do you have a, a plan in place to do the work that needs to be done? In your mind, well, I guess I want to know what you think needs to be done. That culvert seems to be a major issue, I've heard about that. I've heard about the cracks in the pavement that are getting to a point where it may not be even advisable to pour tar.
The last 1,200 feet needs, if you're going to work.
Yeah. So, what's your plan?
Plan, if we weren't going FAA-obligated money, would be to apply for AIM grant funding.
But that isn't going to get you where you need to go.
It rolls over, yes. It, we haven't got bids for the project. As I said, I'm just using Jaffrey as an example, they would do for much lower cost, $600,000. The state rolls over, gives priority, so the runway work first, roughly $250,000 a year, and they obligated it for a number of years. They obligated that money, Jaffrey, for two years until they.
I understand the angst about getting involved with the federal government. Okay, I understand that.
It's that, and then when we have to come to the taxpayers to fund an inflated FAA project, I agree 100% with what, with Hunter's.
I'm going to go to the taxpayers, that's the point. You've got enough money generated every year in there to cover our 5% over the years. But you don't have enough money to take care of the primary, the big upfront money. That's the problem. And I don't know how to get there from here. I don't, listen, there's not a human being on this planet that dislikes bureaucracy more than I do. I, I wallow in this, and it is incredibly ineffective, it is incredibly costly. But in this day and age, it's the only way to do it. And that runway and all the attendant pieces of it are going to, I wouldn't be surprised if we spent $2 million bucks just on the runway, just on the runway, but it'll be done right. It'll, you won't have to worry about it for another 10 or 20 years.
But that would include drainage, I mean, no sense of putting anything on that runway unless you've got drainage coming.
The FAA has insisted it be done that way, which is the right way to do it. That's the way we do our other work until.
I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, it seems the angst here is, I don't want to be part of the FAA.
I don't want to be part of the FAA.
But you do, you do, go ahead.
My other fear is that when they look at the overall airport as part of the master plan, is they're going to look at the trees that are obstructions to the airspace surfaces. The town is going to either take those trees down or have to get navigation easements before, again, before the FAA touches the runway pavement. So, you're looking at additional projects.
Should we be doing that? Should that be part of your plan?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, so why don't we start doing it?
We've already done some of it.
We, we.
And we do it on at least an annual or semi-annual basis.
Every other year, we take out trees and, but there's, there are obstructions on the south end.
And so, what I'm saying is, we're not for a nanosecond, despite the perception, taking anything away from that, but it's beyond our ability. And by what was just said, there are trees we should be taking down. Well, then we need to get on with it. And the FAA is willing to pay 95% of it. So, okay, let's get on it. I'm sure we maybe got to hold our nose a little bit. But for the kind of money that's at stake here, and not only that, but the public safety, we are talking about public safety, the FAA, I will go far enough out on a limb to say that I doubt the FAA sits around in a dark, gloomy room someplace, smoking cigars, trying to think up something that is just an annoyance. The local air, aeronautical activities, they, they are things that are more pertinent or apply to some cases more than others, but generally, they are intent on facilitating safe and efficient air travel.
Jim, did you want to have a comment?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to give, do we need to have a, a vote on the fact that we want to go this direction or not?
No, I.
Is that why we have official or history information?
You really, if I might offer it, you really have to have a vote that you don't, because I'm intent on applying for this grant unless you tell me otherwise, which is the same practice I utilize for all of our other $21 million worth of grants.
I would make that motion that we proceed with this.
Is there a second?
Well, just briefly before.
You want more discussion?
Well, just, it sounds like the airport makes enough money on its own to cover the 5%.
Over the years, it will, now, now that we have, the, the airport has been in the, in the red up until this past year. It is now coming into performance and things, certain things are happening and coming to fruition and so on and so forth, that they are now just, they are just now operating in the red. My guess is that over time, this is an educated guess, that they will, if we watch what we're doing, and hold, save our nickels and dimes, that when the time comes for us to come up with a 5% match, that we will probably have accumulated that in our, in our kitty. And if we have it, then we might say to them, we can't do it this year, we're going to do it next year, and we need to save a little bit more. So, you know, right now, if we were doing a $1 million airport improvement, you have to come up with $50,000. We actually have that, or nearly that, and we would have it certainly within a year. So, those numbers are within our grasp, but $2 million is not.
And if we were doing it under the AIM program, a million-dollar project would need $200,000.
Yeah, to do half the project, to do half the job. And the AIM program is correct. It, we, we, I have been led to believe that, that Newport is probably looking at getting approved for the, for the AIM program for two years, then it goes back into the wash cycle, and then you've got to wait your turn with everybody else. So, who knows when that's going to happen? And to Jeff's point, you've already got a million-dollar project hanging out there that you're going to have to come up with $200,000 worth, or $100,000 worth, to do half the job and leave the rest of it undone, only to continue to deteriorate. You can't do it. It's folly, it's, it's good money after bad. In the meantime, the, the, the superstructure there continues to deteriorate, and some element, some portion of the public is exposed to less-than-ideal circumstances, despite our best efforts. I, I don't take a, a second of credit, a nanosecond ram away from these guys, but they're, it's, they're volunteers, and that's a wonderful thing. We should celebrate that in our community. But at some point, you got to say, I can't, I can't, I can't do this, I, I just, there's so much time, I don't have the right equipment, I don't have the right background for it, I can't keep up with it.
Jim, you want?
I just feel like it's, maybe it's a timing thing, but people just got tax bills that, you know, Steve's taxes went up $4,000.
What have we done to bill change?
I'm just trying to get to a point, just trying to get to a point, though. We have roads in this town, Springfield Road, that's.
Thank you.
Trash. Yeah, it sounds like this board's approving money that we're going to spend at the airport, because it's not going to be covered. He just said it can't be covered. If you have to cover 5%, with $2 million job, it's going to come back to taxpayers. We can put nice bows and everything on this and make it sound good, but the reality is that's what's going to happen.
So, what, Plan B?
I don't know.
So, just as a clarification, they have $2 million over five years.
The expenses of the airport are not paid for by the taxpayers, so it is not going to come back on taxpayers unless you submit a warrant to do so. And if you do that, and the conditions that he's referring to prevail, you have bad roads everywhere in town and so on and so forth, the only way you can get money from the taxpayers to put towards that airport is by affirmative action at town meeting. And if you do that, and things are as bad as he's portraying them to be, what's the chance that the taxpayers are going to say, sure, I won't have my road paved so that we can go over and do some stuff at the airport for those guys at the airport, who I don't even know who they are, most of them aren't residents, and all this other stuff that came up in the years past, what do you think the chances are that the taxpayers are going to puff up a million bucks? I think it's pretty close to zero.
Can I ask one question? If you take and accept the FAA's money, and then the FAA says, you have to do this, who do you think's going to pay for that? Is it going to go on a warrant article?
They pay.
If they tell you, you have to do this.
They will pay.
And it's going to be, yeah, but you still have to pay 5% of it. So, you're still going to put it on the taxpayer?
No, no. The 5% comes out of their fund, their airport fund. The five percent comes out of their fund, their airport fund.
But if it's more than their fund, though...
Then you don't do it. They're not gonna tell you.
So you don't have to do it, no?
No, you don't.
Also, keep in mind that the property taxes for the ground leases out there, thirty-some thousand dollars?
Fifty, fifty-one in taxes, thirty-two for leases.
Okay. That basically goes into the general fund. The airport doesn't even see that. So they're generating that money already to offset the tax rate for the entire town.
I just want to see if the FAA come in and be like, oh, no. Yeah, you signed the paper, now you need to do this, this and this.
You only sign the paper when you go to them and say, we want to do our runway.
This and this alone, each, each item?
Yeah, each project, call it a project, we want to pave our runway. And this FAA says, well, okay, if you want to pave your runway, we will pay ninety-five percent of it. The quid pro quo is, you have to do your runway the way we want you to. And in exchange for that, we're gonna pay ninety-five percent.
And another thing, you know, are the lights at the runway, at the airport, you know, the lighting lights and all that stuff, don't quite meet FAA spec. If we want to bring up the FAA spec, you know, you know, we submitted saying we want to do that, we'll have to pay whatever that costs, but don't pay ninety-five percent of it.
But they have repeatedly said to me, if you don't call us, we're not gonna call you. What will happen at some point is what my fear is, is in two or three years from now, if we don't do something radical about that runway, they expect that every year, somebody's gonna come along and say...
Right, you're done.
No, you're done. So then we're gonna be able to sit there and say, you got a million bucks? Come on, I got, you got a million bucks? Who's got a million bucks? We can get this done like next, no, nobody's got a million bucks. So what's the only way to do this? Is to go to town meeting and ask for the million bucks.
Which ain't gonna happen.
Okay.
Let me, let me also throw this. We have ground leases for the hangars out there, three of the hangars out there, fifty-year leases. As part of that lease, basically, the town has a requirement to keep that runway usable. So basically, we have a legal obligation, the town does, to maintain the runway in a usable condition. So, you know, it's, you know, it's one thing to say, well, you know, town won't give you money to do the runways, but on the other hand, we have a legal obligation to do that. And push comes to shove, we could end up in court, and the judge says, well, it says right here, you got an obligation, do it. So it's not, you know, you know, there's some, you know, obligations on both sides, so.
But in turn, but a project-by-project basis, there's no FAA requirement...
Jeff, what's happened to your vision? I've raised my hand twice, probably the first time twenty minutes ago.
I'm sorry, I missed you. Did you want, would you like to speak now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am surprised at the forum tonight. Every speaker is being rebuttled as they speak, rather than let the issue come to the floor and they complete their thing. They're being interrupted by the town manager. He is obviously ready to do this because he understands the real end value. But that emotion needs to settle down so that people can express themselves who have an opposite point of view. There is one question that I would like to ask. These are volunteers, but yet they get paid.
We have two co-managers who get paid plus, you know, there's not even half a dozen or so, I guess, almost full-time volunteers, you know, that are out there working.
So there is, there is compensation, and that compensation, if they didn't take it, if they were volunteers, real volunteers, that would go back, come back to the town. So what's really happened here is they've taken a number that couldn't be supported by what they were doing and asked for more money. They didn't get it. And then as time went by, they became financially an asset to the community, as well as an environmental and what we want in the, in the community of an airport. So now, what you're being asked to do as a board is to make a decision between the two that you've got here. One that's saying, maybe not, and one that's saying, definitely gotta do it. So that's for you to decide. But please, let the, let the forum go back to some sort of structure so that the person gets to express their idea, right? Like right now, if Hunter was to interrupt me right now, I'd stand and swear at him or something, and I'd have, I'd take the floor back. It's, it's got to have the air out. And that, to me, is, is the most important about our, our government, is everybody's right to speak, and Mr. Kessler, you know that. So please, have it happen in the right way.
Barry?
I believe getting the things back into order, Jim made a motion.
He did.
And...
I didn't hear a second. Jim, do you want to repeat your motion?
Yeah, just that we move this along, and I would agree that we need to, my motion would be to have the town manager keep moving this along towards the grants.
You mean, join the FAA? You, you, your motion would be to direct the town manager to join the FAA NPIAS program?
Correct.
Second?
Let me have a second. Is there any discussion?
Just, he did mention that he does not need us to vote yes for this.
True.
Well, it'd be nice if we did.
A vote of support, is that what we're talking here? Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All right. And it's my hope that we keep the FAA more under our thumb than them under, than us under theirs, and we do not lose the character of the airport. And as I said, we can take baby steps. If we find there is issues, you know, if the investment is small enough, we can reevaluate just the benefit. All right, moving on. All right, I want to do, I think Mrs. Irwin is waiting for me. All right, September thirteenth is the primary election, and there's training for it on August twenty-second. I believe we all got an email from Town Board fans. There's a two-and-a-half-hour-long training session in the Opera House, pretty much in...
There's me.
Thank you.
I look forward to getting a call from you, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just had that on there to bring people's attention. Everyone got that email from Lee?
Yes.
So since we are the, basically, need to be at the meeting, if people want to go in attendance, that is what it is.
Say it, say it again, Jeff, the date.
The training is next Monday, the twenty-second, be nine to eleven-thirty, I think, if I can pull it up here.
Nine to twelve.
Nine to twelve? Oh, mine said nine to eleven-thirty. And...
That's the twelfth.
It's register, you register at the door.
August, no. September twelfth?
Yes.
No, the twenty-second.
August twenty-second.
Thank you, Betty.
It's, it's not one of these, maybe you'd like to come things. It's one of these, you better come things, because the legislature changed the law, and they passed House Bill eleven sixty-three, which I would encourage you all to read, which changes how overvoted ballots are to be counted. An overvoted ballot is a ballot where, for example, you're asked to vote for two and somebody votes for three, or there's a stray mark on the ballot. The AccuVote machine will now kick those back out. And the voter will be told that the ballot has been kicked back out. And the issue is, among the moderators in their listserv is, how will we be expected to explain that to a voter without validating the secrecy of the ballot? So it really is important to you as election officials, be, if you can, I realize some of your work, be attending that meeting, because it is a huge concern. Not all towns have AccuVote machines. Some have hand-count machines. So the overvotes will only be recognized when they hand-count, and voters won't be given the opportunity to correct that. But if there's an AccuVote machine, they will be given the opportunity to correct it. So it's a, it's not an easy conversation, and I would strongly encourage you to come. I have twenty-five emails from my fellow moderators, and everybody is reading it a little bit differently. So it's a, it's an important conversation.
Yep. It's state election law training. It's for invitation for moderators, clerks, selectmen, supervisors of checklist, and inspectors of election ballot clerks. There is no pre-registration. Please register at the sign-in table. And in Newport, it's Monday, August twenty-second. It says nine to eleven-thirty a.m., and it is in the Newport Opera House. So hopefully, it's not too hot that day.
Okay, but my, my message says nine to twelve, but I think the, I think you're right, because I think that it was copied wrong. Starts at nine, goes to eleven-thirty, Jeff, so I stand corrected.
Okay, yeah.
We're meeting with Annie Custer at twelve that day, right?
You're, you're welcome to come.
Yes, and I'd have her come to town.
Jeff, a question?
Yes.
Okay, pro temps should also attend that, whether you've named them or not now?
I would, uh, Betty?
I would encourage you to invite anybody you think might be a pro tem.
Okay.
Because I think it's a significant enough change, that we want to be as transparent as we can be. And I, I think Mr. Spalding's point is well-taken.
Yes.
So like Larry Cody, for example, is often a pro tem. Mr. Spalding is a pro tem. I don't know who else has been regularly, but I think Maura Stetson, who is assistant moderator when I'm not there, should attend. I think it's critical that we all understand it together, however the SOS decides to do the training.
Or at least enough of us attend so that we have that knowledge on the floor day of voting.
Fair, fair enough.
Yep. Also, on a similar...
One more, Jeff?
Okay.
Because you have to have a quorum all day long, that's gonna mean that most of you have to attend. Because if you have a time at which it is lax and you only have two, you're in violation.
You mean at, at the primary?
Or all elections?
Yes.
Yep. So if, if only two attended, this be the example, and those two did their three-hour stints and then left...
But then we would have the moderator or one of the clerks who also attended would be that knowledge base.
That's for the training.
Right. Well, no, I'm saying, if, as long as you have people there, whether it's a selectman, a pro tem, the moderator, or a ballot clerk, or someone who has been through the training, they will bring that knowledge to the poll.
Okay, so others can qualify to that function.
Yes. Is that correct, Betty?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, one thing I want to mention, and somehow I got on to the, on the Facebook page of the New Hampshire Secretary of State. And I guess today, they've been running a whole bunch of New Hampshire election facts. And one of the ones I saw said, New Hampshire uses paper ballots, but New Hampshire election fact number fifteen, and they were called, Did You Know? Fifteen says, Did you know, selectmen are responsible for providing a suitable polling place that is warmed, lit, and furnished with proper supplies and conveniences? And that's RZA six fifty-eight, colon, nine. So this, so all you know, we're on the hook for providing a warmed place.
And you always have been, and because you have a very competent clerk, she always makes sure that the arrangements are appropriate.
Yes. But the, you know, if you can find the Secretary, New Hampshire Secretary of State's Facebook page, I think today, they've been running through a whole bunch of them, and this is number fifteen. And I just saw it shortly before coming here, so I couldn't remember them all for you. I do have that one. Anything else on election, primary election? Is there...
I assume that we'll still be at the school after that interesting discussion earlier this evening.
Well, that's the impression I got today. It wasn't my impression as of Friday afternoon, but this is Monday, so I think we're good.
And the answer is yes, we will be at the school.
Yes. At some point, we're gonna need to check out and vote on pro temps. Do we want to do this at the next meeting? Or we've got our standard list?
You have time, I think.
Yep.
Sure. I mean, traditionally, at least for the last few years, is the board has asked me to write, find pro temps.
Yep.
I fill in the chart, and we get those names back to you, and you authorize them.
Yep.
And I'm happy to do it any way you wish.
Okay. So why don't we do that and look at proving that list at the next meeting?
And you can put my name on the list.
We already got elections coverage on the action item tonight. So we're gonna know who's, what selectman can make it. We should have a pretty good idea of what we're gonna need for pro temps.
Yeah, we do have it in the action item. I'm planning to be there all day on the thirteenth, so...
I as well can be there. I should do it when it comes up, but...
Okay, if I'm pro tem, I, I'm there anyways, rather than pro tem or not.
We have another volunteer as a pro tem?
Yep.
Mr. Lennox, sir. John, what times can you make it? Anytime?
Yeah, preferably. I, I, I wouldn't know at this point, but it's a Saturday, it's a...
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yes.
She'll be fine. Okay. All right. So since we have two volunteers as pro tem, and if I remember right, when you're nominated as a pro tem, that's a one-year appointment, isn't it? Virginia?
Uh, no, you have to be appointed for every election.
Okay. Then who want to make a motion on the two pro temps we know of tonight? So we have that.
Make a motion that we accept John Wong and Brett Spalding, senior, as pro temps for our September thirteenth election?
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
All right. Hunter, you have a...
Offer a friendly amendment, not that's really my place to do so, but Larry Cody is readily steps to the plate. So if you include his name on that list.
Right.
But that will save an extra step later on down the road. In addition, Larry Cody.
And how about it, Larry Cody, to that? Do you concur with that with your second, Jim?
I do.
All right. All right, any discussion? Hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So we've got at least three pro temps. All right.
He called me down for the morning session, too, also, for twelve.
Okay, thank you. All right. Where we at?
Thank you, we'll see you on the twenty-second.
Thank you, Betty.
Thanks, Betty.
Bye-bye.
You're bringing donuts, right?
Right.
Don't hurt the train.
Bye.
Bye now. All right, community center update in direction. I mentioned this briefly earlier, but one of the earmarks we will be getting once the next congressional budget passes for FY twenty-three, which starts in October. And more likely, it'll be continuing resolutions. But Senator Shaheen has earmarked four point seven eight five million dollars toward the construction of a new community center here in Newport. With that earmark, the town manager has gone out, reconnected with a lot of the people who had made pledges earlier. I know he called me about mine, and he called a bunch of others. And we are fairly close to what we believe we need. The town manager... The town manager has also contacted Breadloaf to refine their numbers. And it is my hope we can firm up what we have for donations along with the earmark. And if the congressional budget can pass, say by the end of the year or early January, Hunter has talked to his rural development, which would be the vehicle through which this would pass from the federal government to us. And it'll turn around would be a month or two. So we may be looking at the earmark by early spring with the other donations. My desire would be to, if the board wants to proceed, try to go out to bid so we can be ready to build in the summer 23 building cycle. If people feel we need to bring this to a vote in May, that would push the construction off by a year and probably add 300,000 or more to the cost. So, I mean, pretty much through the efforts of what Hunter has done initially, poking us to move this way, working to get, matching donations, and then putting together the grant application and walking them through it at the federal level to bring this, you know, I think get an incredible amount of money from the federal government for this project to us. We are on the verge of being able to construct the community center without pretty much taxpayer impact or tax, tax rate impact.
Don't you still need our view, our vote?
What's that?
Don't you still need our vote? No. No taxpayer money.
And I'm not sure where we stand now, but I know Hunter has been working the phones, working, you know, break, he had some donations that basically felt they would not stay in if it didn't pass in May. Some of that has come back, you know, they're more than happy to be involved. Some has not yet come back, yet he's, you know, been able to find other money. Money, it's, once you present a picture that you have an earmark from the federal government for more than half the cost, and you already have, say about 2 million more, they're like, this is a going project, we're going to be involved. And some of it's like, a lot of people want to be like the last amount to push you over the edge. You know, we've got a lot of edges we have people push, push over, so.
And so if this, I mean, theoretically, the budget would have to pass at some point. Is there, would it be in there for a period of time so it looks like it would be, I mean, nothing's guaranteed with the government, but it sounds extremely promising, no matter that whether it was passed in, or January, that it would happen, is that?
Yeah, it would happen. The federal, when the federal government finally passes a budget, you know, when they get tired of playing with continuing resolutions and sit down and.
Right.
Pass a budget, and hopefully sooner or later, because as I mentioned with the runway, that was holding us up. And honestly, Pike Industries was doing us a favor, holding a price from a couple of years ago. You know, but then we learned the whole FAA thing, you know, it's sort of like, it's like, well, we'll have to come back.
So once they say they were, do it, that doesn't change on us, like, well, we're going to cut it, and I'm just curious, I don't know how that works.
What's that?
Well, if the budget passes, is there amendments, do they make changes?
This is, this is part of the budget.
Okay, this earmark.
Senator Shaheen, in her announcement beginning of August, listed, I think, 93 million dollars worth of earmarks in the state. And quite honestly, every other senator, congressperson across the country have earmarks in their states where they're waiting for this to pass.
Right.
So it's like, it's not just like, well, should we pass the budget so Newport could get their community center? It's communities all across.
All right, the whole country?
Right. So I think, you know, this is, you know, a nice event. Bert, I saw your figure.
No. Vision's.
Got to wait, you know, a little bit of this, just.
I'm going to get a flag. That's what I'm going to do, I'm going to post it, it slags up, and then we'll, or, and reaches out to.
Something with a number on it, so we know which number to call.
I have found recently that a lot of people didn't understand the community center and all of what it would do. The sheds coming down where the ambulance are now, going in and reconstructing the armor, old armory into that. And then the larger lot, because you remove those, is where the baseball field's going to be and the, the community center.
Right.
So this next time around, even though they don't get to vote on it, they ought to clearly understand what we're doing. And I can't believe it can bypass them, but it's, I'm not going to stand in the way. If we, if we get this paid for, there are concerns about who pays the janitorial and all of the other expenses. A gift of this nature, if it costs us a janitor to keep the place clean, and there have to be at-the-door fees to attend this, that, and the other to pay for things like that? Make it an enterprise fund at that point?
You know, it's, from what the community center committee proposed initially, and from friends of REC, the way they work, we would not be creating sort of a fee structure like I hear Claremont has. You buy a membership for a couple of bucks. It would run pretty much like the current REC programs run. You know, there may be a small fee to participate, but you get a T-shirt. And certainly, I think, they, the REC department currently has scholarships. You know, we're not trying to quote-unquote, break even. The community center would be part of the community, much like the REC center. You know, they have a budget in the town. And, you know, I've had a couple of people wonder, well, what if you need more staff? And my response to that is, well, if we need more staff, that means we have more participation. And that's a good thing, because you have more of the community to portate. So that's where I'm at. And as I said, we're waiting for like, refined numbers from Breadloaf. You know, at some point, we may want to have them come down and take part in the meeting and go over it with us, just to remind people the whole scope and such. And, you know, I know Hunter's still looking for donations and such, following up on making sure everyone who'd committed before is committing again, is working on some of the new industries that, you know, were on the fence before, so.
Done on that subject for me.
Okay. All right.
Hold on a second, how are we doing on that gap in funding? We have, where we're at right now, and what the gap is?
Hunter, you know the gap, more or less?
Without intending to promulgate inaccurate information, I would have trouble pinning it down, because every day, every hour, and I'm not doing the other aspects of my job, I'm working on this, the number changes. If, if we collect the, the yet-to-be reconfirmed pledges that were originally on the books, and the budget update ends up being where I think it's going to be, the gap could be as, as small as 400,000 dollars. It could be as much as 700,000 dollars, depending on, I mean, there's just different pieces. If this one doesn't come down so low as I think it will, and if I lose one or two donors, and this goes up and this goes down, and it's, so it's somewhere, I suspect, this is my best good faith effort, four to 700 today, but.
Which means we have commitment for over 90% of the cost, maybe as much as 95%.
Oh, yeah, I would, I would say, yeah, that's pretty, pretty solid.
Yeah. And that isn't, and within the, the last cost estimate we had, there is a good, I think, six, 700,000 dollars worth of contingencies built into the.
Right, so those are one of the numbers that will change. The more refined the design becomes.
Yeah.
The lower the contingencies will be necessary.
Yep.
But, you know, even if you, even if we say, we went to town meeting last year with like 2.7 million pledges, we didn't have the earmark. We have the earmark, so let's just say for the sake of mathematics, because I'm too tired to do all the numbers, we're at 5 million, and we get 2 and 1/2. You're at 7 and 1/2 million against a 800,000 dollar project, or 8 million dollar project, 8.1 million dollars. So, I mean, that's pretty as simple as it gets. It's that 5 to 6 to 700 that is doing this on me right now. And until those kind of stop doing that, I won't know, yes, it's 237,000, or it's 437, because all those numbers are changing, but it's kind of in that range. And then once I figure out what the delta is and it stops moving, then we will shift our efforts to gap funding, finding somebody to fill that. And if I can go to the right agency for a right resource, which I hope is, and believe is out there, I'm optimistic is out there, and say to them, "I need 400,000 dollars to build an 8 million dollar community center." That's like, really? That's all you need? Plans? Budget? Money in the bank? Commitments from the government? Okay. Because people don't like to invest in things that aren't winners. And when you, when somebody can say, "For 200,000, or 300,000, or 400,000, I can make this happen," it's that close, and it's a certainty, they're much more likely to donate. I had, I had an increase in one donor who had pledged $100,000 in the first couple of go-arounds, and now 300,000. Because they know it's, now we're coming down the home stretch. So at the same time, I have a 500,000 dollar donor who I think is waffling and we may lose. So it can move that much in a day with one or two phone calls. So I, I'm really not, I'm not trying to be resistant, but I'm fearful of saying, this is how much it's going to be, because there's too many moving players. But it's in the range.
So that's a good answer, I appreciate that. One other question, Hunter, does that earmark, is there wording in that earmark that holds us to the design that, that was presented? Or is there, will the room in that design give us some options about what do we do with, with that?
Well, that's a good question. And based on the fact that maybe it may have been demonstrated tonight, that a lot of these programs have little funny little attachments to them, which was not the case. In the 80s and 90s, when you got earmarks, it was pretty much a straight shot, here's your money, do what you, do what your thing, and they send you the reimbursement. Now they're getting sent to the agencies who correlate to the topic. So for the community centers being funneled through community development, because that's what they kind of do, they are focused on life in rural communities. So they got it. And so to find out, the airport, for instance, the only, the only hook on that one is, if you want the money, you have to become an NIPUS obligated airport. The windows, and I got a 250,000 dollar grant for replacing the windows in this building and putting in an air conditioning system. 250,000 dollars, the first foray I got was, oh, well, it was a 50% match. So we said fully on that, and so now they're reconsidering, it may go down to zero. So there's this, this process that goes along. But the answer to your question, Jim, I called rural development, can only say last week, because I can't remember what day it is, and asked them what hooks, what hammers, what, you know, the rewards and detriments might be. And they say, because this is new for them too, they've never had this experience before, they've never had all this money in all these programs. They said they are not aware of any catches, 50% matches, this, that, the other thing, with the exception of procurement. And that that is that we have to expend this money via what they refer to as free and fair processes, which means the project has to get bid, which we do anyway. And they're, they're suspicious that we probably have to pay Davis Bacon wagerings, which are not the majority of the question. Has some influence, but it's not the majority of the question. So at this moment, that's the only catches that they think will come through once the final paperwork arrives in their office. To Jim's question, I believe the way the senators and what we provided to her, and what she turned around and used to justify this appropriation, requires us to build a new community center. We did provide them with plans, but I do believe, the way it's worded, that minor adjustments would not be an issue. I think if you wanted to add a swimming pool, that would be a different story. If you wanted to put in two bathrooms instead of four bathrooms, I don't think that's an issue. So I think there's room for some minor, non-material tweaking that we could do. And when we find out what the delta is after Breadloaf is finished, we may have to do some of that, if there's that gap and we can't figure out any other way to finish it. On the other hand, we might find ourselves, we might have a little bit of extra money around, or where there may be a donor that might come forward and say, "Look, if you'll add this, I'll contribute X." I think we could add, easily add. I think it gets a little sketchy if we try to delete in any material way. But that's yet to be kind of finalized.
Jim, since basically Shaheen's announcement mentioned construction of a new community center. That basically meant we couldn't take the money and then just, you know, spook up the old one?
No, that we didn't, I, I wouldn't think go there.
Could you, is there any monies available for this, like, we'll see if it passes, whatever, this climate kind of coverage that passed in Washington now? Because you have such an old building that is so outdated.
Which old building?
The REC center? Well, most are built, but not like the REC center. Is there any money potentially you could help fill the gap there? That might be some grant programs for that?
What do you have demo of that?
Well, no, no, I meant for the new building.
For the new building?
Because you're taking something old and you're bringing it to, you know.
Yep, I mean, I would imagine new construction would be your new standards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
I don't think it would be like, whatever they call it, gold lead standard or something.
Lead standard, no, but we'd be ready.
But it's, it's a sort of thing, you know, I was thinking this, you know, a new building in this day and age, you're going to air condition it. And there's been a lot of talk about these new heat pumps. You know, I had a heat pump when I was in Virginia, it was only good down to like 20 degrees or so. Nowadays, they work better. And we're generating our own electricity. So that may be the sort of thing where we look at, you know, okay, you probably need some sort of gas or propane, or gas or oil backup, but if we, if you're going to put in a compressor, put in a heat pump, so that you can utilize it for that.
So maybe there's money that you can gap fill?
Construction, by my, the construction standards will, will mandate the architects to build to current code, architectural.
Right.
Climate code, they'll be putting in all kinds of R factors for this, and R factors, that all have to meet current energy efficient, modern state codes. So to, to your general question, that, the new building will be far more, far more energy efficient than we could ever make the old building.
Right, I was thinking maybe there's money available to fill the gap that you're, you know.
Through the Congress, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I see what you're, I just caught on what you're saying. Bert?
Just to make sure that this money would do the entire plan, the redo of the armory for the fire apparatus and, and mowing, along with the removal of buildings over here.
It's not redo the armory, it's take the armory down and put up.
A new building.
Right. Which would be about three bays wide, two bays deep, so that we can store a couple of ambulances there, buildings and grounds.
Okay, I, I got, I got all of that. The question, the question is, the amount of money that we would get, is that just for the new building? Is it also include the ball field? And does it include taking the old buildings down and the other ones coming up?
I believe what we, we received, the earmark was for what they said was 55% of the project.
As presented.
And taking down the old building, in the estimate, there's 200,000 dollars for that one.
Okay, all right.
So that's, that's how they basically.
So we're not sacrificing anything on the plan, we're getting just exactly what we want?
Until, until the ball stops bouncing, I'm not ready to represent anything. That is the intent and plan. And we presented the package for funding. The package included the demo, the new garage, and baseball field. So, so I'm, I'm very confident. I mean, if somebody came along and said, "I didn't know you were building, Congress didn't know you were building a garage," well, Congress doesn't know, doesn't care that level of detail. But if somebody came along and tried foul on that. But if somebody came along and tried foul on that, I think the budget on that was 250 before inflation, so it's probably 300 now. So, 300, if you took 300 out of the 8 million, we, if we get 4.8 million out of the feds, we still have plenty of money to take care of the rest of it. So, we lose our own local money to attend to the controversial rules.
But you, just in your statement, that you're going to be careful, Biden's got another two years.
Yeah, but this money is hopefully going to be appropriated this fall or during the winter, so it won't matter, it'll be out the door.
All right. Too bad you didn't bill in July, there was no inflation then.
You know, who knows what costs?
We applied for this before town meeting, but I, I wasn't going to stand up at town meeting and tell you that you had $5 billion. It's unheard, the guys at Rural Development?
It was there later, I believe it. It was literally a case, because I remember Hunter telling him, he was talking with one person, he said, no, you can apply for a community center on this program, use this wording in this section. And I think it was literally right around the time of the wood for recession, probably a few days before, a few day factor. So, it's, it's not like we had anything concrete to bring to a meeting.
That's fine, Scott, because prior to the earmark, Rural Development, it's at zero, we're not fin, giving it any money. So, this has come from Congress to them, totally different package. We are an application, we are told we are an application in Congress. So, it's not like anybody else can compete for it or anything else.
All right.
Timing is the only question, the plan is going to be available, and that's a Congress question. If you can tell me when Congress is going to pass the budget, I have a question.
Yeah.
Though as I said, there's earmarks across the country waiting for that Congress act.
Hopefully.
All right, anything else on community center? All right. Keep on top of this and hopefully be able to go out to bid sometime this winter or early spring?
So, that's the plan, I go out in December, January. If Congress behaves and all the other fellow people line up in a timely manner, then we can see construction in the summer.
All right, moving on. Notice of preliminary assessment values. Everyone got their notice from Avatar over the weekend? I think it caught everyone by surprise. I would have been happier if the town had a heads up, so we could have had some sort of heads up to taxpayers. Paul, do you want to update us on exactly what these numbers we all got mean? We've been trying to figure them out all day.
Well, first I'll say, they're all preliminary, so they're all subject to change currently. So, summary of those preliminary numbers.
Thanks.
Shows that essentially anything with a bed has gone up and a lot of.
Paul, can you also email a copy of that to Jim, so he gets it tomorrow, winter?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, you'll see that residential property went up almost 81%, both vacant land and.
Meaning the value of our residential property?
The value.
We didn't add 81% more property.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. The value of residential land went up 81%. The value of commercial industrial went up 41%. And most of that increase was commercial, commercial properties that include housing. So.
Multifamily?
Multifamily and large, large apartment buildings, complex type things. Utilities went up slightly, that's now subject to a specific state law. Net, total net valuation went up about 66%. Tax rate, comparative tax rate was included with the letters at 1975.
73.
1973. I'm sorry to say, I left the omission when I, when we gave the formula to, to compare, I didn't say round it to the nearest thousand. We had initially people coming in with $4 million taxes, and that was due to my exclusion of those forwards. But the 1975 was compared to 33 was the actual tax rate last year. What we do is we just plug in these new values and what a comparative rate is. That's not the final rate for this year, because we know that there was spending at the school meeting and the town meeting, this is going to add to the tax rate. And those will come through once the, once the final values are set. And we'll move forward from that, so probably middle of October, we'll have an idea of what that is. Right now, we're in the appeals process. If people have questions or concerns about their values, there was a website on, listed on the page. I was in there a few times today, it will give you information on your property, show you what your old value was, what your new value is, and some of how they put that together. If you have further questions or concerns, you can call to schedule an appointment with them. They're doing, because of COVID and everything that's been going on, and also to keep the cost down, I think, they're doing phone, phone hearings for those questions of value. Once those hearings are done, they'll go through, they'll make any changes based on those hearings, or they may do an inspection. If you say, hey, you've got me down for a finished cellar, and I've got a stone cellar with dirt, they'll come in and they'll come out and verify that and then make a change if necessary. So, again, it's all preliminary, it's probably close to where it will be in the end. And unfortunately, given the real estate market past couple of years, which has continued, one of the things that they really looked at was the last year of sales. But even coming into July and August, the market is still hot, even with, with interest rate changes and things, we're still seeing transfers in excess of what we have things assessed for. So, it's all a function of market value, and here we are.
So, my question to you, or I guess today, when I talked with you, the town requires the same amount of money to run. And with the valuations of, say, just residential property up 8%, you know, the tax rate is down 60-some percent, you know, basically that means the people with residence are paying a little more than they did before.
That's correct.
So, us with houses are paying more into the tax base needed to run the town, who's getting a tax reduction?
Essentially, kind of commercial and industrial properties that don't have beds.
Okay.
I, I went through and just, overall, we've got about 3,000 properties, 3,200 properties, 968 went down. This is based on the current, the current assessments. 2,270 went up. Looking at residential properties, 591 went down and 2,113 went up. So, certainly there has been a large shift. I didn't go through and do commercial industrial, because I need to break out.
Right.
Housing units versus, versus others, and I've just gotten to David today, so we started pushing.
Right, I mean, I expected, you know, people's property values to go up, and I think I've been saying it all along, I hope it would bring down the tax rate. But on the other hand, you know, I would have been happier, at least people I've heard from and I've seen online, if the difference between what their old bill is and what the new one potentially will be was a little closer. But I think the fact we've dropped the rate from 33 down to probably, I think, as you mentioned earlier, once you add in the stuff that passed the two meetings, we'll probably be looking at about $20.70 maybe, or so, maybe 50 cents.
In that plot, it'll be under $20.
So, I mean, it's certainly a reduction of about a third of what we're, the rate we're at now. So, hopefully, people will feel better about the value of their homes and the fact that their home is worth more per dollar for what they're paying out. So, they'll understand that.
Mr. Chairman, a question for me?
Yes, go ahead.
But Paul or Hunter, is there any information relative to how we compare to maybe other towns in the county that's had a recent reevaluation? Have they also seen similar increases in the values that we have?
I have to believe they have, but I have, I don't have any specific information to give you, Jim.
Okay.
Because I know, well, like, I think this year at one point, we had like 20 building permits for new homes in town, which is, you know, three or four years ago would have been unheard of.
And, uh, no, I want to, yes, you're right.
Yeah, so we're, and certainly the costs of those homes are a lot more than what we thought they would have cost four or five years ago.
Correct.
Part of that is cost of material and supply and demand.
Correct.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? And this is a developing story, I would imagine.
It is a developing story, but be careful with the, the dates in the letters, we're pretty hard and fast. And we're trying to schedule appointments. And if they start to overbook, they might go into the next week. There's probably no, nothing in the contract, and then we go beyond what they've allocated term for. So, if people have questions, they should make the calls soon.
Keith?
Yeah, I was, I kind of reviewed mine, and mine is a, not a welcome increase, but a doable increase. At least, what the numbers, I figured out, if, when the tax bills are actually sent out and there are more than what you were expecting, is there something that taxpayers can do to dispute that?
They can request an abatement certainly, but Keith, the hearings that was going on now would, are really an informal process to get that abatement. Unfortunately, under, under the New Hampshire taxation system, there really isn't much to do. If you feel there's an error or a problem, you can request an abatement. But just not having the ability to pay a bill doesn't, isn't a reason for an abatement.
Well, what I'm saying is, there's a larger than expected increase. Like, if my taxes go up another thousand, I'd be going, wait a minute, that's not even in the ballpark what I was calculating.
I think from what Paul was telling me today, I mean, the Avatar gave us an estimated rate based upon what last year's rate is adjusted for the new increases in values of $19.73 per thousand of new valuation, that didn't take into account, say, any changes like our police contract added a few cents to it.
I understand.
That a few cents, the school had some things, I think they may have had a contract that will add some. And once those are all added in by DRA in the fall, we would probably see a more realistic tax rate somewhere like from, as Paul said, under $21, maybe $20.20.
Right, and in that case, for me anyway, that's a doable increase.
Yeah, that would be another, say, 75 cents on the tax rate.
I can just drill in on that a little bit. Every taxpayer has the opportunity to appeal their valuation, and therefore the tax every year when they get a tax bill. There's been no changes to that. So, every year is a new year. So, you can appeal, but you, you really can't, to Paul's point, you can't appeal based on your ability to pay that tax. You have to appeal on, on the basis of there's an error, you've been unfairly taxed, or something to do with the value of the property. Can't just come in and say, well, this isn't what I thought, and I don't have enough money to pay this. Well, that, that's not, that's not the basis for appeal. You have to go in and say, the appraisal, for instance, the appraisal says I have three bathrooms, I only have, I only have two. It says I have a paved driveway, and I don't. It says I have four bedrooms, and I only have three bedrooms, something like that, something empirical, based on data. You can't really go in and say, I think. And I would encourage a resident that really does feel that there's an issue, to go and make an appointment with Avatar, present that case. They'll show you why they've, how they've come up with your value, and make those corrections early on. But if those don't, if there's no agreement and you can't sort it out at that level, there's always the, the opportunity to appeal when they get their final tax book. But then you have to be empirical about it. And you have to show that you're being unfairly taxed based on what you have.
Bert?
There's one more step. If you can't afford to pay, then you ask for an abatement, and you give the cause. That would be after the bill.
And that would come to this board.
Right, as, that way.
I'll abate yours if you abate mine.
One hand washes it in.
That sounds like something wrong there. I haven't quite figured it out yet, but it doesn't sound good. Mine comes out to a significant increase, but I'm not going to talk about that now. But the thing that bothers me the most now is the properties that went up. So, if you were at 200,000 and you went up to 300,000, that $100,000 of increased net value that you have, Biden's going to have 87,000 IRS agents to go out there and collect on them.
No, it's local tax.
No, it's $90,000.
It's just humor.
Yeah.
So, I guess my question is, what you say to the taxpayer that taxes went up $4,000, and then, that's one question. And then the other question is, where does the extra money go? Because your budget's this, so obviously you have a huge surplus of money.
I think it was, I asked, Paul, and he mentioned, basically, some commercial properties are seeing the reduction.
So, it's a redistribution, if I might, redistribution of the same, of the same dollars. You collect the same amount of tax revenue, it gets redistributed, the payment gets redistributed from residential or business or some sort of, I had an email today, I was going to drive, who thought his tax bill was going up $3,000. And we evaluated and sent him corrected numbers to show him that really is only about half million.
Well, these are legit numbers, it's for like $4,000 at $20. But, I mean, but you have an increased value of almost 66%. So, that's an increase of valuation, an increase of revenue, 66%. That's not an offset.
But the rate of which you're being taxed is down by a third.
That means nothing, it's the same money. You can triple the valuation and then cut the rate in a third, you're paying the same amount. It's smoke and mirrors. Son of a B, it a couple of years ago, everyone bitched about how much value of the property is on the lake. Okay, so, we'll raise everyone's property value, we'll cut the rate in half. You're still paying more taxes, whether you feel better that you're not fifth highest in the state.
Yeah, well, you feel better. You're feeling better because you're getting more property value per thousand.
Right, if you sell it, that good off.
And I think what impacted the increases of the residential property has been the residential property market over the past two years. You know, it's tended to drive things up. Well, people buying commercial property hadn't seen that increase. So, when you're looking to see, you know, I don't, I don't know anything about appraisal, but that's something, I mean, past couple of years, some of the housing prices here were astronomical compared to what we thought houses would sell for a few years before.
Mr. Chairman, his, his question, if I may? So, there are, there may be somebody in town that actually pays $4,000 more in taxes, but there's a business up the road that's going to pay $100,000 less.
But you're still 66% over. You can't take that out of equations here.
66% over what?
Last, you had 444, or 445 million dollars in value.
Yeah.
On 4122.
Yes.
Now, you have 739 million.
Right.
That's more money. So.
That's.
That's a lower rate.
Yes.
That's more.
More value, right.
That's more.
But if you take $20 to it versus the 33, it still don't, it still ended up. I mean, maybe once the exact number comes out, it'd be easier to come in here and say, listen, here's the now exact number, $19.03, here's the valuation. Because I know there's still some things moving, but.
What, whatever is going on, DRA is going to look, okay, how much money did the voters approve for the town, Newport and the school and the town? And how much is accounting to them for, you know? And it's like, whoa, how much is their valuation? Okay, so the rate needs to be this to make it work out, make the math work out.
It just doesn't seem like a simple math problem. If it's 30 million in taxes coming in, then we adjust the value to that. It seems like there's a lot of potential leftover money extra, because some people's taxes are going up drastically.
Right.
Some may go down.
That's what DRA does, they look at it, you know, what do we need to set the rate up to get that amount of tax dollars raised? Right, you know? They're now valuing their property at 700 something thousand versus 400 something thousand.
Right.
You know, and so, you know, based upon that new valuation, we've got to raise so much money for the town of Newport and the school district, so what's the rate we charge to make the math work? And I'm sure they make it a lot more. And I'm sure they make it a lot more complicated than that.
Right.
Paul?
Just, yeah, I'll echo what, what you said here. What we did to come up with the nineteen seventy-three is we took last year's tax rate, last year's taxation requirements for the school and town and everybody, and just divided by seven hundred and thirty-nine million instead of four hundred and forty-five million. I can show you that sheet. It's, it's very straightforward. Actually, it's, it's easy now, once you see it on page. The other thing I would just say is a warning to people, all, unfortunately, this is, I started saying, the New Hampshire taxation system, this increase all comes in on the second bill.
Which would be when?
Which will be November, December, Murphy's Law says it will be Christmas.
Which, this coming, this coming winter?
This, this, yes, this December is when it will be due.
So DRA will take these new valuations, create a new tax rate force, and based upon that, we will, you will be told what to bill us on.
That's correct. So I would just warn people, if you've got escrow, you might want to start, I mean, based on the nineteen, nineteen seventy-three, I think mine came through and said that it's going to go up eight hundred dollars. I'm going to increase my escrow at least by the eight, the eight hundred dollars over the next five months or six months, but I'm partway to what the net increase may be.
Of course, that eight hundred dollars, that's an annual increase, so it would be four hundred each billing.
No.
Second.
It's eight hundred all, it's like, oh. So yes, if it were split evenly, it would be much more dual.
Okay. So we have to make up this increase all in the second billing?
And that's the problem.
So if I might, Mr. Chairman, elaborate on that. For some people don't understand that, the first billing is a, I call it a stall, that's based on one half of the previous year's full year billing. So the previous year didn't have any of these changes, so the adjustment is made in the second billing.
Is there some way we can get that information out? Do we have that ability to do that? Just sort of like the, you know, because normally, whatever the tax bill is for the year, you pay in two pieces. Here, we got to make up the difference all in one payment. So the person who, you know, looks at a three thousand dollar increase, that's not split over two payments, that's just-
And that's why I mentioned it here, just trying to get the word out.
Yeah.
We can try to find some, some outlets for that information, try and get people aware of what's happening.
Yeah. Perhaps make, put it on the future agendas for the next month or two, so we can feed it over and over, so people understand it.
Jeff?
Bert?
Okay. Boiling down to the sap and trying to make it easy for the average person to understand. Business side down, residents, private properties up. And so your tax bill will be the same, except depending on your category, if you're in business or not, or rather the Tita, your Tita, end of the Tita Totta goes up or down. And so that being the case, in my case, I'm three thousand dollars up. So I'm going to take this information and look at that closely because there are three commercial properties in there.
Okay.
Hector?
Just as one, this is just as an aside, if there's any silver lining to this, most of this is people's reaction to change. I don't know how many revaluers I've been through, and people always react very similarly. And it's very understandable. I've always found that I have faith at the end of the day, after the process is done, most people are understanding and figuring it out. But one little silver lining to this, just a little silver lining, is that there is some indication by this revaluation of your property's value. So you should take a little bit of solace in knowing that your property today is being seen as being much more valuable than it used to be. And for my entire career, I have said to people, I'll buy your property for the price that we've valued at it, and I haven't bought one yet. So it's just a little bit of a reassurance that your investment, which is an S-Edge, for a lot of people, is in fact a greater value than it has been in the past. That's a, that's a good thing to know.
Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't make you feel better when you write the check, but it's a good thing to know that your property may have gone up by two or three hundred thousand dollars. And yes, you might have to pay a thousand and two extra a year, but it's a nice confirmation that at the end of the day, when you decide to sell your property, there's a good indication that you're going to get a nice return.
Right. I mean, once upon a time, people in town used to complain that they couldn't afford to sell their house. Maybe now they can, but doesn't mean they'll be able to buy anywhere else.
Right. And that's how we get to the tents in California, right?
Yeah, that's part of plus zoning.
How often does a, does a valuation happen?
Three, five years, state constitution.
This was statistical. Next time will be the actual, where they come in and look through.
All they did in mind was drive up the driveway, talk to me.
I was wondering, because when the market crashes and it's not worth what they say it is, because we're in a super inflated market right now, that's going to crash, it has to. I'm just curious.
And if, and if in fact we turn into a recession right now, this is going to row. This is going to hurt.
I can add one more perspective to that.
Okay.
The real goal of revaluation is to determine the individual property owner's share of the tax burden. If, if all the prices in the, in the community are inflated because of the hot environment, and ten, five years from now, three years from now, thirty seconds from now, the market crashes, then it's perceived, the principle is, is that the entire market drops. Your share of the overall liability for your taxes remains unchanged. The exercise is to compare your property that is X by X by X to someone else's property in the community and make sure that your property that's similar to someone else's in the property, that you're paying a fair, you're about the same. So you're paying your fair share of the pie. Pie doesn't change, to the point earlier that we're not raising more money. It's just the allocation of the pie. Pie. Who gets a, who has to eat a bigger piece or a smaller piece? And one of the primary functions, and when you get, look at the analysis, the mathematical analysis, the coefficient of dispersion, and the ratio, that is a measure as to how accurate the values are and how they compare to similar properties throughout the community. It's an, it's an exercise in equity to a large degree. So if the market crashes, then everybody dives together. Market goes up, presumably, every goes, everybody goes up with it.
Jeff?
Yes.
Well, this is not contrary to what you've just said. What you said is true. But the problem with what we have here is we have this spike coming up. I can tell you of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed building that sold for three hundred and sixty. So now you're up here, but when in fact the economy, if it does, goes down, there's somebody that goes down with that economy that hasn't got a job now. And that's when tax properties come to the municipality. If you go through the Sullivan County Registry of deeds for years, you can see the good years and the bad years, where you have twenty, forty tax takings, and then you've got the whole list that goes on to page after page. So my worry is, this boom that has hit us, will it last? And I don't want people to get paranoid about it because I think it will last. And I give two reasons for it to last. One, now this working from home is an interesting thing. Granddaughter graduated from the University of Maine, along with her boyfriend, and they got married and went to South Carolina and both worked. And when COVID came, she had to go home and do her job on the phone. She put two and two together and said, jeez, we buy a home up in Maine, I can still work in that. And so they're both here now, working from home. So that right there changes the whole thing of life and et cetera. So think about that for now, that as being one, that mode, that mode of person changing. The other is, you want to live in New York City? Camden, New Jersey? Philadelphia? Boston? Will defund police? No. So if in fact you wouldn't think about working from home because you've got the dog and the kids and all of those things, you might think about that real strongly because you don't like the traffic into the city, what happens in the city, and coming out. So this real estate market could stay with us, and that would be a good thing. But if it doesn't, we're in trouble.
All right. Anything else on this? All right. Moving on to action items. Next board meeting. I think by tradition, we have voted years ago that we would not meet on Labor Day, which would be our normal meeting. We can either meet the Monday before, the August twenty-ninth, two weeks from now, or we can stretch it out and go an entire month until the nineteenth of September. What is the pleasure of the board?
I think we probably should not do the Labor Day meeting.
No.
Move the meeting back to August twenty-ninth. As an ad, as needed meeting. If we get nothing to do, then we can just push forward from there.
All right.
If we have something coming up that needs attention, then we'll have a meeting scheduled.
Okay. So we will meet in two weeks if we need to meet, and if not, we will go for five weeks until the-
September-
Nineteenth.
Why can't you just move it to like September twelfth or something?
The third, because then we'd meet the following week. If we, if we meet in two weeks, that's a normal two-week period.
Yeah.
And then it would be three weeks until the next meeting, so it sort of breaks it up. I mean, if we were meeting normally, we would go three weeks and then two weeks. Meeting on the twenty-ninth, we do two weeks and then three weeks in two days.
I'm getting with that.
All right?
Yeah.
Is that good?
Good to me.
All right? We don't need a motion on that yourself. We'll plan on the twenty-ninth of August unless there's some reason not to meet. All right. What's the last item? Last item we took care of. So does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right. Good night. Have fun out there, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. Thanks for tuning in. All right. I'll get to home.